And welcome to the planning board meeting of June, oh, twenty fifth?
Twenty fifth.
Twenty fifth.
May twenty fifth.
Oh, sorry. May twenty fifth. It's wishful thinking, twenty twenty three. Just a note to the audience that we are broadcasting and recording the meeting. So first on our agenda, as always, is the clerk's report. Kate, do you have anything this evening?
I, we did receive some correspondence between, and I apologize, I will have for the next meeting, the tally. I do not have that.
Right.
But just a general report, we did receive communication.
Okay. We'll catch up on that next time. We have two public hearing tonight. One is for the sixteen Union Street definitive subdivision plan. That will start at seven forty five, and after that, we'll follow the fifty McGoncall Road site plan modification. Our schedule's a little off. That should've been seven fifteen, but it's seven forty five, and that, since it was listed that way, we're gonna fill in the time, taking care of some meeting minutes, and we'll get those taken care of. So I believe those are just following the...
Just following the agenda.
Following the agenda?
In the binder, yeah.
Yeah, so we have kind of a series of them. We'll just take care of some of our normal administrative stuff first. And the first meeting, as I mentioned, I think last meeting, maybe two meetings ago, we're trying to fill in the little gaps in our meeting minutes. Mostly, they were retreats, executive session minutes, things like that, that we never had our official meeting minutes approved, so we're trying to take care of that. So this first one, January fifth, was the retreat between the Design Review Committee and the Planning Board. I divided, if you didn't get a chance to look at them, I divided them all out by who said what, and so it'll be, should be fairly straightforward, at least to check your own words if you want to make any modifications there, but we can take a few minutes to look at them. Anyone have, I don't want to rush anyone, but if you need more time, that's fine. Does anyone have any changes to the meeting minutes for January fifth, the retreat?
I just had a very minor one.
Okay.
The second line, "Education is a two-way process, and the public needs to want to learn." We can cut off one of the words.
Where was that?
The second line, and under my name.
Oh, so line eighteen?
Eighteen.
Okay.
Oh, thank you. Public wants to learn or needs to learn, what happened?
Which one do you want? Wants to?
Wants to.
Okay.
And then, I don't know, Marcelo, I thought that attention be on the process, on that process? Does that seem right?
I'm sorry, what line are you on again?
Twenty-two.
Twenty-two.
Marcelo's.
Yeah, I think what I responded to was the process of the two-way street that you highlighted, in that the resources should be available, and then, once the public's interested, there will always be an opportunity to learn and participate, and that's the process that I was referring to. That process is referring to your comment.
Okay.
Yep.
So are you good with it as it stands?
Yeah, I think so.
Anyone else? All right.
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes of January fifth, twenty twenty-three, with the small edit that you've mentioned.
Enter a roll call vote.
Dipa Wangadai.
Anna Tesmenitsky, aye.
Marcelo Hona, aye.
Catherine Jersey, aye.
Ann Tricia Kendall, aye.
So those are approved with that minor modifications. The next one is November seventh, twenty twenty-two. This was the in-person meeting we had in this room, talking about ten to sixty Main Street, kind of that working meeting, where we got out the trace and tried to go through some design options.
I have a comment. I think Kevin from Design Review is there, and since it says others, I think we should list him.
Oh, yeah, he was there.
I know he's not on the planning board, but specifically, since it's saying others.
No, no, you're right. He was there. Do you remember anyone else from the boards, at least, that were?
I just remember him.
Yeah, okay. Good call.
Any other changes? I can make a motion.
Just a really minor one. On the fourth paragraph, the second to the last lines says, "He proposed the churning of one or more buildings to create a place courtyard that was most more neighborhood-like, that had, I think it could be, sounds better, that would have a more neighborhood-like feel, not in feel."
Okay.
It looks, it sounds weird.
Just take out "in."
I would take out "in," but maybe you have to rephrase it. That would have more, no, that was.
That would have a more neighborhood-like feel.
Yeah.
Okay.
That works.
Any, anything else? Okay. Kate, you're on.
I make a motion that we accept the minutes from November seventh, Planning Board meeting with the small edit.
I'll second it.
And a roll call vote?
Oh, Anna Tesmenitsky, aye.
Marcelo Hona, aye.
Catherine Jersey, aye.
Ann Tricia Kendall, aye. So those are approved. The next set is our regular meeting from March ninth. This was the one...
You see that, the executive session?
Oh, is it?
Yeah.
Right, executive session.
Zero, three, there'll be consideration. There was a project going up upon the street, three streets up upon.
Right, so, but this was the one where Anna started off chairing the meeting, because I was at an event, and then I came in.
Anna emailed me to add a sentence, and I've yet to do that.
Okay.
So that's something that I do have to...
And that would've been?
That's the next two, there's two sets of minutes, and then...
Yeah, because the executive session was in between, right?
Yeah, but we do have the regular.
Yeah, so these are the regular meeting minutes, so on line eighty-eight of these regular meeting minutes, just before the executive session, that would've been where we need a line that I joined the board, that I joined the meeting late. So we put that in, right, like at line eighty-eight?
Yeah.
Okay.
So are we gonna, how does that work? Do we need to make a motion for both minutes at the same time, or they go separately? Because...
They go separately, I think.
Yeah.
Because typically, even you wouldn't go through the executive meeting minutes until the time was appropriate to do so. Right, depending on, yeah.
Yeah.
Okay.
Can I ask, what's with the lines on the March ninth regular meetings? There's like lines next to president on the front, like, is that...
I think that's a formatting.
Oh, okay.
That's just formatting.
Yep.
So clean it up so it's pretty?
Yeah, I think that's the formatting. When I get these, not to be boring, but when I get these, they come in eight and a half by fourteen legal sheets, and so when I print them on eight and a half by eleven, it always kind of gets thrown off a little bit. So that's why you see that the change from one point to the other. But when they're posted, they're saved as PDFs, it's eight and a half by fourteens, and so they're a little bit different on the formatting.
Other changes from anybody, either for the executive session or the minutes?
I make a motion to accept the minutes from the March ninth executive session without, we know edits, right?
There is one edit.
One edit.
Yeah.
I'll second it.
All right, and a roll call vote?
Anna Tesmenitsky, aye.
Marcelo Hona, aye.
Catherine Jersey, aye.
Ann Tricia Kendall, aye. So those are approved. The next set is our regular meeting from March ninth. This was the one...
You see that, the executive session?
Oh, is it?
Yeah.
Right, executive session.
Zero, three, there'll be consideration. There was a project going up upon the street, three streets up upon...
Right, so, but this was the one where Anna started off chairing the meeting, because I was at an event, and then I came in.
Anna emailed me to add a sentence, and I've yet to do that.
Okay.
So that's something that I do have to...
And that would've been?
That's the next two, there's two sets of minutes, and then...
Yeah, because the executive session was in between, right?
Yeah, but we do have the regular.
Yeah, so these are the regular meeting minutes, so on line eighty-eight of these regular meeting minutes, just before the executive session, that would've been where we need a line that I joined the board, that I joined the meeting late. So we put that in, right, like at line eighty-eight?
Yeah.
Okay.
So are we gonna, how does that work? Do we need to make a motion for both minutes at the same time, or they go separately? Because...
They go separately, I think.
Yeah.
Because typically, even you wouldn't go through the executive meeting minutes until the time was appropriate to do so. Right, depending on, yeah.
Yeah.
Okay.
Can I ask, what's with the lines on the March ninth regular meetings? There's like lines next to president on the front, like, is that...
I think that's a formatting.
Oh, okay.
That's just formatting.
Yep.
So we'll clean it up so it's pretty?
Yeah, I don't think that's a formatting. When I get these, not to be boring, but when I get these, they come in eight and a half by fourteen legal sheets, and so when I print them on eight and a half by eleven, it always kind of gets thrown off a little bit. So that's why you see that the change from one point to the other. But when they're posted, they're saved as PDFs, it's eight and a half by fourteens, and so they're a little bit different on the formatting.
Other changes from anybody, either for the executive session or the minutes?
I make a motion to accept the minutes from the March ninth executive session without, we know edits, right?
There is one edit.
One edit.
Yeah.
I'll second it.
All right, and a roll call vote?
Dipa Wangadai.
Anna Tesmenitsky, aye.
Marcelo Hona, aye.
Catherine Jersey, aye.
Oh, sorry, Ann Tricia Kendall, aye. Okay, so now, the March ninth executive session, this was...
I think we just did that one.
We just did that one.
We just approved those.
I thought that's what we were...
No, we did.
Oh, I thought...
It was a regular meeting.
No, she just approved the executive session.
I did, yeah.
That was a motion for executive session.
Yes, it was.
Okay, I'm sorry.
Oh, okay.
I thought that's what we were doing, sorry.
Yes, that's what she just moved.
Are we in a different order? Because my...
I think we are in different order.
Yeah, this one came first.
Okay.
Mine had the executive session first.
Mine has the regular session first.
Okay.
Okay.
So now we can, so now we can do the regular.
Okay. So the edit has the regular in, which is line eighty-eight, saying Tricia came to the meeting.
So the first one did not have an edit.
So should we fix that?
We should, we should fix that.
Go again, Kate.
Yeah. I make a motion that we accept the minutes as written for the March ninth executive session.
Second it.
And roll call vote?
Dipa Wangadai.
Marcelo Hona, oh, Marcelo Hona, aye.
Anna Tesmenitsky, aye.
Catherine Jersey, aye.
Ann Tricia Kendall, aye. So executive session is approved.
And then the regular...
I make a motion that we accept the minutes of the March ninth Planning Board meeting as amended with a small edit.
I'll second that.
And roll call vote?
Dipa Wangadai.
Anna Tesmenitsky, aye.
Marcelo Hona, aye.
Catherine Jersey, aye.
Ann Tricia Kendall, aye. Okay, so then, last ones were the, just the executive session for, it looks like Dipa was not there, for, this is for the VFW.
June ninth, June ninth.
Yeah.
No changes from...
Oh. Kate, you were at that executive session, right? Because you had started in May, you weren't...
I, I think I was there, and I know when we turned to vote, I abstained, because it was like a revote of something I didn't know about.
Right.
Yeah, that's, I did check, that's my recollection, yes.
You were involved in the three-eleven case, because it came before she joined the board in May.
Right.
Yes, okay.
So that's why you're not there on the, well, hold on, you're there as a yay, aye?
Yes, and I, but because it was the executive, I was there, and then we reheard the, we had a Planning Board regular meeting, and I abstained from that vote, because I didn't know all the details that were presented. But I did vote in that one.
Gotcha.
Right.
That's my recollection, yeah.
Yeah. Yeah.
I'll make a motion to approve the June ninth, twenty twenty-two minutes as they are.
Second.
And roll call vote?
Anna Tesmenitsky, aye.
Marcelo Hona, aye.
Catherine Jersey, aye.
Ann Tricia Kendall, aye. So, thank you, everybody, we got through those. And just to note, we're not allowed, per open meeting law, to start public hearings until the time that's listed, so, yeah, so we just have to do other things. So, looking at our agenda...
For administrative things?
Yeah, I mean, you know, we have, is anyone coming for the first?
He, Sean Malone is on.
Okay.
Yeah.
So we have about ten minutes before we can start. I mean, we could...
Do you want to go through our reports and...
Yeah, do we have?
Yeah, let's get through it. I think we can do it in ten minutes.
I think so, too. All right. We'll go through reports and on planning topics and meetings. Do you guys want to weigh in on comprehensive plan?
Sure, I think...
It was a big meeting.
We had a steering committee meeting for the first time. I think it was a very nice meeting. Hopefully, I want to say there was a town manager newsletter with the photos, if I recall.
I don't think I saw that.
Maybe that went to the, anyways, it was a very, very nice meeting. It's a big group that has a lot of diversity and expertise in all kinds of areas, and it was a very constructive meeting that included a breakout session for the group, lots of energy and excitement, so that's a really positive step. And the joint meeting with the select board and planning board, as many of you knows, coming up, I believe, in... June twenty-first, when we will together interview two of the candidates for the consultant role, and that's the update.
All right. Any other updates on that? Let's see, Design Review Committee, I don't think, nine to forty-nine is going to be heading to Design Review Committee, but it had to be, had to be advertised, so...
Which is completed, so. Nine to forty-nine Homer did go to, is going to Design Review from the last meeting we had. We didn't have enough time regarding those regulations, they have to advertise a week prior to, and this is, they're not advertising in the newspaper, a butter notification has to go out to anyone within three hundred feet of their property, and so after the last meeting, we didn't have enough time to get it done and put it on the Design Review Committee's agenda, and then also, last meeting, there was a situation with the, I think it was a situation with the Zoom accounts? There was something going on, but Design Review Committee is meeting tonight on a different Zoom account, and either way, we'd have enough time to get it done, so with that said, it will go on June first.
Nine to forty-nine is going to June first.
Correct.
Okay. Yeah, and under number one in the binders is just the final version of, we had made a couple tweaks to it last time, but the final version of our memo to the Design Review Committee.
Oh.
I think we just added in bicycle safety. I don't know, most of it, most of it was just, was the same from last time. We took out, I think, street scale.
Mm-hmm.
So...
And was there any, I don't know if this is part of this discussion, but was there any follow-up with the town manager or the utility relative to what was discussed at that meeting?
I don't think yet.
I've discussed, I've talked, I've talked about it with Michael. I think there's some questions about how it would be paid for, designed, implemented at that scale, so I talked with him about it, I got put together a memo, I need to, you know, I've reached out to their engineer, and or not their engineer, the engineer, to try to get a cost estimate, to try to follow up with that. So it was discussed, and however, there was no committals or commitment to doing it, so it's really difficult when you start getting into the design of what we did in the downtown, because, number one, there's five infrastructure service providers, I'll call, right?
Yeah, but we can't go into it right now.
Yeah, we can't.
I don't want to go, yeah.
Yeah, I don't think it's on our agenda. Yeah, it's not on our agenda, so I think we need to...
I just wanted to see if there was follow-up, that's all.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, and then, obviously, there's nothing for the, nothing for the CPC, because we're gonna talk about that later tonight. Sustainability Committee, both Ash and Matt from the Sustainability Committee have reached out to me about how to move forward with further discussions of a potential bylaw, or potential, it's not really a bylaw, but a potential warrant for the fall, so, but nothing has happened with it so far. Yeah, I think that's all we got. Anything else? Any questions on that section, eight or nine?
Oh, I think, were we doing eight and nine, or just nine?
Eight and nine.
Okay, so, the last time, the economic impact tool, we, I think, had a really good discussion and ideas, and I really hope that that doesn't fall apart, because we have some big projects, when the moratorium's over, we're gonna have big projects, and that's where that's particularly helpful, and I think the Planning Board just has to commit to getting some data that we are happy enough to present to the public, and I think we still have a deficit on that, so I'd like to make sure it doesn't fall off the radar screen.
Yeah, I'm a little unclear, I mean, I know we were gonna keep going back to this to try to understand it further, and to try to understand the numbers in it, so I'm looking for a clear directive.
So my recollection was Peter was going to reach out about consultants, potentially also to the Framingham State, and I think, and I think we were also going to, Peter was gonna reach out to Beth Reynolds, I remember that was your suggestion, so at least those, and then we, I think it was somewhat in Peter's court to decide, do we try to look at that tool, do we try to hire someone to look at the tool, do we hire someone to make a new tool, do we use a simplified tool? But we have a bunch of options, we have to just keep our foot on the gas, I think, to look at those.
Okay.
So are you, I guess, the action item would be some kind of memo, if possible, from Peter, so that we can evaluate our options, as to what our options are? Is that what you have in mind?
We need the, I mean, we need the information first, right? That's, yeah.
Do we know what we're doing? Speaking of kind of action items, the scenic roads outreach, I want to say, a while back, I had mentioned that I could take a stab at drafting something relating to that, and I don't think I ever did, but I also remember, somebody, didn't the town hire someone sustainability-related? And we brainstormed the possibility of having, of working together with that person, am I imagining this, on the scenic roads outreach?
No, we were, well, number one thing is, we updated the website, and so the website's been totally revamped, pictures have been added, the scenic roads, explanation of what a scenic road is, and so I think the biggest thing is, that has been revamped, and now the question is, how do we do the outreach? And I think we talked about doing like a mailer with some language on that mailer and or postcard, and so I think that was the next step, is the action item, and, you know, I think we do have a draft internally, but if you want to also put together some words to check it out, you know, I can send it over.
I'm guessing postcards cost money?
They do.
So we may want to discuss the budget for that. I know the town manager does a newsletter, I wonder if we should consider something like that, that's already part of what we do as a town, so that we include a little blurb in there, hey, new website about scenic crowds, if you live on these streets, something like that?
Well, I think we had originally...
Cheaper than cards?
I think originally, we were looking at a mailer, because it's the only way to reach people that are actually on the scenic routes, because they may or may not even have internet, you know, kind of thing.
That's true.
So, and it's a limited amount of houses, it's not like...
Yeah, you're only gonna, you're only gonna send, you know, you'd only send postcards in my eyes to anybody living with, on an address on a scenic way.
Yeah.
Do we know what it will cost, like, is it, do we have a budget of any type?
Estimate.
Yeah.
I can try to put that together, obviously, once a butter's list is created, you just multiply it, but...
I'm just saying, if we're gonna do it, we might as well make sure we're not overburdening, figuring out what it costs. If it's like affordable, then...
I think, I think it's, I think it's, I think it's very much palatable to put together something of this nature, but I agree, I think with that, to do something, to put something in Michael's newsletter, to say, this is what's going on, or, you know, if you live around scenic grove, please take these elements into consideration.
Yeah.
And I think that's what that element, I think we can do that as you're staying. Now, also, I would say is that, if it's going in the newsletter, we can add more language, right? Because we don't have to squeeze it in on a postcard.
Into a postcard.
You know, and I think a postcard could also provide a link to the website.
Yeah, or just to say to come into Town Hall or whatever.
I mean, I can take a stab at drafting a proposed postcard for a discussion at the next meeting, I guess, and we can use that as a...
I can try to, I'll try to send you tomorrow, next week.
Okay.
I was gonna say, didn't you say that Alvaro was kind of starting something? And I, and I thought the sustainability person was Samantha.
Samantha has started to look at it.
So before, before Anna starts working from scratch, we might as well start with stuff we already have.
We'll take a look at what we have, and then we'll send it, send it off your way.
Okay.
And what's the parking memo thing?
That's something that has been on there for a couple of months, and I just have it sort of on the radar. A couple of months ago, I think it was Marcelo, you mentioned it, that we should take a look at our parking regulations, and our parking sizes, and so I've had, I pulled a bunch of data down from Mass of Planning, excuse me, American Planning Association, I've kind of started to look at it, and I think we do have, we do internally have a draft of a parking memo on what, you know, the regulations are, and also to say, what, you know, what's going, as a comparison, what's going on in other communities? And it all came from the conversation, going back to five oh one Ponce Street, when we started to talk about compact car spaces versus a regular car space, and so I think it was just kind of one of those things that came up in that discussion, and so I think we talked about briefly, about maybe putting a bylaw change together, and obviously, it didn't come to fruition for this past spring, but I think it has the legs to, as something to put in what it looks at. Yeah.
We keep going over these subjects time and again. We have oversized parking regulation that puts more asphalt when it's really not needed, so maybe we just clean it up once and for all.
And the other thing that's to think about is, we can fold in the building requirements, we're going EV parking, excuse me, the building code requirements with EV parking into our zoning bylaws, if we want to strengthen it, and that, if we even want to go that far, but...
Yeah, I think if it's in the building code, it's good.
It's good.
Yeah, you just let the building code do it.
Speak for itself, okay?
Yeah. Okay, so, oh, we are now at seven forty-seven, so that we can, we've got a lot of administrative stuff done, which is great, and we can move on to our regular agenda for the seven forty-five. And we can, um, move on to our regular agenda for the seven forty-five, um, sixteen Union Street definitive subdivision plan.
Mm-hmm.
Um, Peter, can you tell us where we are on that?
Sure. Uh, I am first off, excuse me. First off, excuse me, uh, Peter Matzek, Town Planner, I'm going to read the public hearing notice into the record. Uh, the Ashland Planning Board will hear a public hearing, uh, excuse me, will hold a public hearing on Thursday, May twenty-fifth, two thousand twenty-three, at seven fifteen, in the second floor, uh, Select Board Hearing Room. Ashland Town Hall, one oh one Main Street, Ashland, Mass. one zero seven two one. This public hearing can also be joined via Zoom Video Conference through the link followed below. The Planning Board will hear the petition of Fifty-Eight Exchange Ashland LLC, one twenty, Quarry Drive, Milford, Massachusetts, zero one seven five seven, filed on April eleventh, two thousand and twenty-three, requesting a definitive subdivision plan under, excuse me, plan, uh, excuse me, requesting a definitive subdivision plan per Chapter forty-one, Section eighty-one K through eighty-one double G of the Massachusetts General Law, Chapter three forty-four, subdivision of land of the Ashland bylaws. The applicant, uh, applicant is seeking to create two buildable lots, uh, in a two hundred and seventy-five foot feet of proposed roadway. The property in question is identified as twelve and sixteen Union Street, Sessors Map fourteen, lots seven, uh, seventy-six, seventy-seven, and seventy-eight, uh, in the Wildwood Mixed Use District. Party wishes to be heard on this matter, should submit comments to the Planning Board ahead of time and/or appear at the place of indicated above. Materials can be viewed on the Ashland Town Hall, excuse me, may be viewed at Ashland Town Hall during normal business hours or on the website, the Ashland Municipality. For more information, uh, to submit concepts, please contact myself, Peter Matzek, at my office line and/or my email at, or, and/or email to the Planning Board. Uh, with that said, uh, we are here tonight, opening the public hearing for a definitive subdivision at twelve to sixteen, uh, Union Street. This is the land, uh, that is abuts, uh, and surrounds the new Public Safety Building. Um, and it was back in, I believe, November, uh, and into the December, uh, the applicant Fifty-Eight Exchange filed a preliminary subdivision. Um, and so that preliminary subdivision was approved, uh, and then under Massachusetts General Law, the applicant filed a definitive subdivision within seven months. Uh, and so here tonight, we are looking at that definitive subdivision of the land. Uh, and tonight's application will be presented, uh, via Zoom Video Conference. Mr. Sean Malone, uh, who is joining us via Zoom. And so that's where we stand, uh, with the application. Uh, and I think at this time, if I may, hand it over and introduce Mr. Sean Malone, uh, to present the application to the board.
Great. Uh, thank you, Peter, and members of the board. Uh, I am Sean Malone from Oak Consulting Group. I'm the civil engineer for the project and representing Fifty-Eight Exchange Ashland LLC tonight. Um, if I may share my screen, I'll just like to quickly walk through the, the property and the proposed project and talk a little bit about what we're here tonight for.
Uh, you're currently a co-host, so please feel free and share your screen.
Great. All right. Um, as, uh, as Peter summarized, um, this is the property at twelve and sixteen Union Street, located on the south side of Union Street, just south of the split with Raverly Street. This is directly abutting the new, um, Public Safety Complex. The high school is back here, and Wildwood Cemetery is up here. The total acreage is approximately eight point five acres. Um, and as shown on this plan, there are some, somewhat extensive wetlands on the site, primarily at the, uh, the rear in eastern portions of the site. Um, and we'll be looking at, um, a, a, the subdivision up in this area. This is the, the significant uplands of the, uh, of the site. The storm water generally flows down into this site from a, a much, much larger watershed. This is kind of at the bottom of the basin, hence all the wetlands. Uh, and then there's a, um, low point down here with a box culvert that goes under Union Street and, uh, flows into the, uh, uh, the river. I believe it's, uh, Sudbury River. Um, the proposed project is a simple two-lot subdivision. It's a two hundred and seventy-five foot roadway from Union Street with two buildable lots on either side. Um, we believe we've designed this to be in full compliance with the town's, uh, subdivision rules and regulations. Um, we have, go to this. We have, uh, a proposed sewer connection to the existing sewer in Union Street, as well as water service, showing the service connections to each of the lot with a hydrant at the rear. The storm water from this site will be collected with some catch basins and sheet flow into this kind of detention holding basin, where it then go into a infiltration, uh, system, and then overflow into, um, uh, subsurface drainage or into the existing culvert to be discharged down to the river. Um, the total area of disturbance is approximately one point two acres. It's about fifteen percent of the site. Um, now, just to kind of take a quick step back here, um, and talk a little bit about the, the, the purpose of this. The only intention of this plan is, uh, to establish a, a zoning freeze. Um, that's why, uh, the, the applicant, Fafford, has, um, uh, submitted this. And, uh, I think the, the intent is to, to freeze the zoning while they're contemplating different options here. It's something that they've done in, in many different communities while they're, uh, assessing their properties in different development scenarios, sale, what have you. Um, so there really is no intention to build this. Um, however, that being said, uh, we believe we have designed it to, to all the standards. We understand that this is out to peer review right now. Comments, uh, haven't gotten back yet. I understand they, they just received it a short time ago, so that's certainly understandable. Um, and then we'll be meeting with the, um, Technical Review Committee next week to, to discuss, um, the kind of ins and outs, nuts and bolts of this. So, that being said, uh, we certainly don't, uh, expect the board to take any action other than a, a continuance tonight. But with that, I would like to turn it back over to the board and see if there's any questions, anything that I could, uh, expand upon for you.
Thank you. Um, are there any questions from the board? Kate?
I, I do sort of, they're internal more than the applicant, that I, I took a quick look through our subdivision rules, and there's some, I, I think it says on here, it went to the Conservation Commission. I forget if they owe us a report, but the Health Board owes us a report and the Technical Committee. And it's forty-five days, and I think next week is over the forty-five days, so I want to kind of make sure that's all okay.
So just to answer that, I've talked to Sean, myself and Sean have kind of worked that out, and just with, with some scheduling. Um, we were able, we weren't able to squeeze in a meeting with, with everyone's time. Uh, and so I think Mr. Malone, uh, has, has agreed to have that technical review meeting outside of the forty-five days, and we'll be able to get that report to the Planning Board. Um, this plan was submitted to the Board of Health, uh, when we received it, so I can follow up with, with them. Um, and, and, and I wrote a memo and I, and I failed to send it out previous to the meeting. But, you know, the Board of Health, the Board of Health comes into play, uh, and traditionally comes into play when septic systems, when septic systems were needed and when water wells were needed on each house lot. And this is not the case for this subdivision. Uh, so we, I can follow up with the Board of Health Director on, to see if there were any comments. Uh, but, but I can, uh, but that's what I will state regarding typically what Board of Health comments are following the definitive subdivision.
So before, traditionally, it was the Board of Health that would look at these things, but over time, the third-party reviewer, GCG, who, who, this has gone to.
So this is sent out to GCG. Um, I followed up with them, and they just, they're, they're slammed busy. Uh, and so this was, this is in the queue, and this was gonna be looked at this week, so I was expecting the report back. This week, they were just so busy that they can't even, they couldn't even look at it until this week.
So would you say that though the Board of Health still has to look at it and sign off on it, that now, be, today, because things have gotten so complicated, that is supplemented also with a third-party reviewer that looks at it and gives us informa- gives us feedback as well?
That is correct.
Okay. And CommCom, do they?
So CommCom, they're gonna file with, they have to file with CommCom. Um, and they can, they have to do that separately as their own permit. So number one, this would go through a site plan, I mean, a stormwater permit, um, with conservation. And then because in this instance, there is work within the hundred-foot boundary, they're gonna have to file for their, for, for additional permits with CommCom.
Um, and finally, I think, um, for me, um, well, Kate, do you have more, actually? I didn't want to interrupt what you were saying.
No, I think, I mean, it's at a high level, covers it. I, what I want is not to put us in any kind of constructive approval over any duration that says you shall. It's very clear on.
So, just to answer that question, internally and administratively, I've worked with, with Sean and Sean can, can hopefully state, you know, well, stated in agreement, that they have agreed, Sean, uh, with Mr. Malone, with the Fafford Company has agreed to continue this matter, uh, until July thirty-first. So there's no pressure of the Planning Board to come to an agreement, uh, you know, at this meeting or, or the next meeting. And so we do have some time, and, and, and they were not looking to put the town in, in any position as a constructive approval. Uh, and so that conversation has been reached with them, and, and, and they are on the same page, and they concurred to the extension.
Mr. Malone, as that representative of the applicant, is that, is that your understanding of the agreement to July thirty-first?
Yes, absolutely, and, and we have submitted the, uh, the, the, the town's form, um, signed and, and indicating that, yes.
And that's been filed with the town clerk.
Okay. Anna?
So my, my only kind of thought on this, and I, you know, I hear kind of the words of, hey, we're just trying to freeze. This is not kind of a big deal, really, in a way. Um, we're not planning to build, and I hear all that, but the subdivision law is still fairly complex and requires quite a, quite a few things to be considered by this board. I'm just looking at Section three four four one. Um, and I'm looking at the subdivision plan package checklist that's in our materials tonight, that's not checked in any way. And it talks about the potential for waivers on the bottom, if certain things are not checked. And it's not filled out. So my hope is that once we get all of these materials that we're waiting for, I personally would really appreciate a more thorough application process that gives me, as a planning board member, a direct response to the purpose of the statute under Section three four four one. Like, hey, we've met all these requirements. There's about ten of them. They're all done. This, this subdivision is safe. Um, you know, uh, that there's secure, securing adequate provision of water, sewage, drainage. There's so many different factors that go into this, and I don't want to just say everything's fine because we're just freezing things and we don't plan to build. This is still a real subdivision. So I, for one, would ask for a memo at the next meeting that walks us through the requirements of three four four one, how you've met them as an applicant, and actually fills out the checklist.
I think that's a part of, I think the checklist is really a part of GCG's process, right?
Just to explain the checklist, that checklist is kind of coming from GCG, and that's something that's, that I internally have as a document. And now, through conversations that I produced with a checklist for the site plan review and design review, I went ahead and I printed that out, and say, okay, this is just an internal checklist. That was not meant to be filled out by the applicant and/or anybody. That was just for us to look at, okay, this is what, this is what we need to look at when we analyze a subdivision.
Absolutely, but it's certainly something that's prepared. Uh, it looks like it's prepared by some sort of engineering organization for planning boards, I, I believe in Massachusetts. And it talks on the bottom about waivers and how the planning, planning board has the right for strict compliance with all these rules and regulations. So I think the document has some veracity and some usefulness to this board. And I, I do think using expert opinion is key, but it's also key for this board, because this seems to be a more complex subdivision document, that we should understand what we're approving, not just kind of, oh, this is just a freeze, we're not really building anything. Well, technically, if we allow this subdivision, you could build. So I think we need to treat it that way.
Yeah, I think, I think that's a, um, yeah, understood, that even though that they're not intending to build, we obviously need to look at it as, yes, someone can build. And we have to look at it in the same level of detail as we would any subdivision. So I think, I think that's a fair point, and I think that all of us agree with that. Um, so, um, but, um, instead of going through this checklist ourselves with the applicant point by point, I would really want to refer to our third-party, um, reviewer, who we've worked with, obviously, for decades, to look at the finer points of this, and there's professional expertise. And then obviously be able to ask questions on top of that for things that we don't understand versus us kind of going through it ourselves. Um, the one question I had, though, um, that is related to the three forty-four that you mentioned, is, um, i- is a question about traffic, and if that's something that the applicant is looking at. Um, just because we do have that brand-new Public Safety Building right there, um, police cars going in and out, fire trucks going in and out. Um, and I, I, for one, never pictured a lot of traffic going in and out, except those first responders, right? So this brings, um, some question to my mind about how, how traffic is being looked at, because that is part of the Ashland, um, subdivision bylaws.
And I would just add to it, I mean, I, for one, would want at the next meeting to go through, and I agree, I don't have any plans to spend an hour going through the checklist. Experts can handle that. I'd like to see the responses through the expert, and I would like some assurance that we went through the checklist in some fashion. But for me, the bylaw is where I'm looking at, and in addition to the safety, every single factor in that bylaw, I would want to ask the applicant to tell me, not just the safety piece. It's just a paragraph. So what I'm envisioning for efficiency is just a very quick memo from the applicant that tells us, here's the, whatever, ten things or eight things that are mentioned in this bylaw. We've addressed them. And it's right in Section three four four one.
Yep, we'd, we'd be happy to provide that.
Yeah, I remember looking at those. Can you give an example of a few of those things? I've looked at it earlier, and I can't remember what's in that.
Adequate access to all lots. They'll be safe and convenient for travel, lessening congestion in such a way and in adjacent public ways, reducing danger to life and limb in the operating for motor vehicles, securing safety in the case of fire, flood, panic, other emergencies, compliance with bylaws, securing adequate provision of water, sewage, drainage, underground utility service, fire, lightning, coordination with other subdivisions, neighboring subdivisions. I have no idea if there's other subdivisions. Presumably, that's something the applicant can tell us. And if there's two of them or two lots, I don't know how that relates to that. So those are the factors.
So, so in the past, um, dealing with GCG, we have had a, kind of a back-and-forth document, right? Until things are resolved. Do you see this as something like similar?
Absolutely. If, if these are all covered in the, in the, in the, in the peer review, then that's gonna give us some confidence. I just want to make sure that that's addressed.
Or, or.
I was.
Or as a separate document, that they could address it, and then GCG could look at it back and forth, okay?
Exactly.
Does that make sense, Peter?
Yeah, I can work with Sean, try to get that.
Yeah, I'm just trying to formalize this so that we don't, to me, it felt like, oh, this is just a freeze, we're not gonna build anyway. And I appreciate that, but unless you can guarantee that in writing, I think we still need to go through this.
Yeah, and, and, and don't get me wrong, I, I just wanted to be very plain with the board, but I completely understand and agree with the, um, the view that this could be built. Um, it does need to meet all of the standards and all of the requirements, absolutely. And I, I didn't want to give the impression that, that we felt that we didn't have to in any way.
So, um, does anyone, obviously, there's a lot of homework that needs to, this is kind of, obviously, just the intro to this project. We just read the public hearing notice. Um, and there's a lot of data and homework that needs to be gathered and then brought to the board for, for us to look at.
One thing I forgot was the Upper Charles Trail thing. So I could not find clear directive yet as to what authority this planning board has in a subdivision decision to. in a subdivision decision to address those concerns until we actually have a live project in front of us. In my research, I could not find that. But I am very curious with where the applicant stands on that, if the applicant has seen the memo from the Upper Charles Trail Committee and what position the applicant is taking as to whether we have any authority on that issue.
Has that memo been forwarded, Peter?
I believe, I believe it has. Yeah, Sean has seen that and he, he has been forwarded the memo that came to the planning board, yes.
Okay. Yeah, so that can be at least a part of the discussion?
Sure. Sean, Sean, I don't know if you want to address that now, or do you want to put it in the memo?
Yeah, and, and we, we can address that in the memo. And I think, you know, that there had been ongoing conversations with, with those folks. And we can, we can further the conversation a little bit, but in short, it sounded like they were asking for significant portions of this private property for, for a public trail that would then encroach on the, the owner's ability to, to utilize their property in the future. So I, I'm not sure where, where all that could, could stand. And to the, the question or the thought posed by the, the member about the planning board's jurisdiction on this, I, I don't think it's relevant. I, I think it's a, it's a different conversation, it's a different animal. But we can certainly discuss that more in the future as we move through this.
Yeah, so I think it's just, obviously, the, the trail, at the present time, we've just been discussing this in the last month or so, is still evolving, I would say, is still early in its development. But as we have a comprehensive plan and process, we're trying to look ahead as best we can to how such amenities for our community might be considered. Obviously, the legal jurisdiction of the planning board is something we will well adhere to.
Yes.
So.
I do have a question, though, for the board related to that.
Please.
I mean, what, like, I think maybe the owners want us to ask the town to, about this? Like, I, I believe why we've been asking these other groups to come and making sure we have very clear communication and pathway, and everybody's been excited about that. And this falls under that to not let something slip through that might have been. So I think, I'm, I'm not sure what the thing is. I mean, I can make a motion that we ask Peter to work with town about that, so it's official? Or maybe we don't need that?
I, I think the question is, and I'm no expert on subdivisions, but according to the state regulations that Peter provided, I don't know if he sent that out generally or, I know he sent it to me.
The memo.
The, the pages from planning.
No, I have not sent that out. Excuse me, I have not sent that out.
That, I, I think, and we can look into this further, but I think the planning board actually has extremely limited ability to, to, to request such things or demand such things in a definitive subdivision. So those are the things that we're working within that we can ask, but I don't think we have the power to demand. We need that be clarified, but.
But, but my question was, can, will the board support asking Peter to discuss with the town to make sure this isn't like that, what the town can do about this? So it's not forgotten, I guess that's.
So I, to be more direct, I think, Kate, correct me if I'm wrong, I mean, at least what I'm hearing Kate say is, we have private property here, and we have the Upper Charles Trail Committee via chair presenting us with a comment that's essentially saying, if this is not taken care of, the trail will not work. That's a big deal. So if we have zero jurisdiction, which I think we do, I, I don't think we can do anything in a subdivision to address it, I couldn't find anything. Then at the very least, we should discuss a way to communicate that to the Town of Ashland so that if the town has interest in making this trail happen, the town needs to take charge and discuss this with the private owner separate from our jurisdiction because it seems like the town is the one that has jurisdiction.
Got it, that's a different ask than what I, okay, understood.
Yes.
Thank you. Marcella?
Yeah, beyond the, the jurisdiction discussion and, and the goodwill of trying to get an amenity like this to happen, I am very uncomfortable with, with the process to start asking and even inquiring on, on asking private property to, to give esements or, or parts of, of their property to something that is completely vacuous in this, in this, at this point. You, you cannot, you know, you need the horses and the cart before you start running. And, and this is from a design point of view or a project point of view or a plan, this is way far from being ready to even start asking those questions. We, we had a presentation that, that has a lot of ambitious, like ambitions and, and good ideas that have, that, that are really far from even having a tiny speck of clarity or technical understanding of what, what's involved. Before that is, is a waste of time to, to, to pretend that we can actually advance the conversation.
Yeah, there's, there's definitely ought to be some balance in, in those between things that are in front of us right now and real and dreams and inspirations that we hope might be achievable.
Kind of like thoughts and prayers. So, so no offense to anyone as I say that. I, I think for me, I'm feeling a pattern. I feel like a lot of projects come to the planning board and then we hear about, well, what about the Upper Charles Trail? And I care about the Upper Charles Trail, but our jurisdiction to force any of it to happen is limited. And at some point, I feel some frustration with that because when we get memos from the Upper Charles Trail Committee and we can't do anything, I wonder who can? And in my opinion, the folks who voted for the Upper Charles Trail, and that was the select board, need to be informed that we, as a planning board, cannot make this happen. They need to make this happen. So I, for one, at some point, would like to discuss that. How can we, as a board, maybe through a memo to the select board, express this and convey that they're the ones who have proper jurisdiction? And they need to connect to the Upper Charles Trail Committee and start to think about how to properly negotiate with private landowners because I don't think it's our role.
Well, I think it might be a point before that, maybe not before that, but an invitation for a more direct discussion with the select board because we haven't heard, from their point of view, the ease or difficulties of the plan they have been presented with. And just like we're all for, probably all five of us, all six of us are all for a trail, that doesn't mean a trail at any cost, at any price, at any sacrifice, right?
Absolutely.
So, and we shouldn't, we shouldn't think the select board feels any different. So it sounds like it's a, a point for discussions that we really understand better the history of this thing from, from their perspective and then see where things land. But that said, unless anyone has any comments, we're at our 30-minute time slot for this project. It was obviously just the beginning and we would be looking, is there anything else we need to do today before we continue this to the next time?
No, so I've accepted the.
I, I received the continuance from Mr. Malone that has been filed with the town clerk as appropriate. And so this is just a, we just need to pick a date to continue the public hearing, too. I do expect through GCG, with communication through GCG, that we will have a report, hopefully by early next week, knock on wood. So our next planning board meeting is June 8th. I don't know if, if Mr. Malone's available, but that is a, a date that we could put on, put this application off for.
Do we have, do you know what our June 8th calendar looks like right now?
Right now, we have 10 to 60 Main Street, and then we also have 9 to 49 Homer will be back in front of us. And I've, and, and I can't say this for sure, but I, I will say that I, I have had side conversations with 10 to 60 Main Street, and I believe they may be requesting a continuance off of that hearing.
Well, I would suggest, then, that to the board, that we do put this on June 8th. And if our schedule gets full, we, we, you know, are very careful about the time allotted to each project and what we hope to continue at that time. But just to make sure our calendar doesn't, not that it's gonna run out, but that we have time to fully vet this before the end of July, which we should if we keep on a regular pace. Does that sound okay to put on June 8th? Okay. Then I will make a motion that we continue. I forgot the address.
12, 12 and 16.
12 and 16.
Union Street.
Subdivision to, subdivision public hearing to June 8th. Is there a second?
I'll second it.
And a roll call vote?
Debra Wang.
Anna Teszynski, aye.
Marcela Lohona, aye.
Catherine Jurisguy.
And Tricia Kandai.
So we will continue that to June 8th and we'll see you then.
All right, Sean, I'll reach out to you and obviously we'll, we'll work through the process, so.
Thank you very much, folks, have a good night.
Thank you. All right. Next on our agenda is 50 Magunko Road Site Plan, Site, Site Modification Plan?
Site Plan Modification.
Site Plan Modification.
Yes. And I will read the public hearing notice into the record.
Thank you.
Thank you so much. So the Ashland Planning Board will hold a public hearing on Thursday, May 25th, 7:15 in the second-floor hearing room, in the select board hearing room, Ashland Town Hall, 101 Main Street, Ashland, Mass. 01721. This public hearing can be, also be joined, this public hearing can also be joined via Zoom through the following link in the public hearing notice. The planning board will hear the petition of Michael Clements. Did I get that right?
McLemmons.
McLemmons, sorry. Owner of Mike's Autobody with the address of 183 Magunko Road, Ashland, Mass. 01721, who is requesting a site plan review modification per Chapter 41, Section 6 of the Ash, of the Massachusetts Zoning Act and Chapter 282, Section 9.4, Site Plan Review of the Ashland Bylaws. The applicant is proposing a change of use from a trucking company to an auto, to an autobody shop. The applicant is proposing the reconfiguration of parking, screen, fencing to screen the property from Magunko, providing additional landscape across the front and south, south side of the building and install vertical granite curbing in the sidewalk across the front to the property. The property in question is located at 50 Magunko Road, Ashland, Mass. 0721, assessors' map 13 Lot 141, in the industrial zoning district in the solar overlay, excuse me, the over, the solar overlay district. Parties wish to be heard on this matter should submit comments to the Ashland Planning Board ahead of time and/or appear at the time and place indicated above. Materials may be viewed at Ashland Town Hall by appointment or at the Town of Ashland website under the Planning Board current cases. For more information or to submit comments, please contact myself and my, list my office line and my email address. So with that said, I can also note, I believe I sent out a memo that was put together by the planning staff that was circulated last Friday in the applicant, excuse me, and I believe that memo is already, was also circulated to the applicant's engineer. And so at this present time, if there's any questions?
No, I think I can give you the floor.
I've not been here for, in combined meeting. Where would I set up my easel?
Right there.
Okay, is that fine?
Yeah, it's good for us, I'm not sure if everyone can see.
Well. I can actually, if you give me one moment.
I was gonna say, maybe tip it a little bit more towards, are you guys? Oh, for the camera, I thought you meant to say that you guys can see.
No, I got, yeah, you have this thing, too.
Okay, yeah, true.
My name is Joyce Hastings, I'm from GLM Engineering, and I'm here tonight with Mike McLemmons. We have, as was discussed, we are filing for a site plan modification. Mike is Mike's Autobody. Mike has been in town as a resident for over 40 years, and he's had his business on the other end of Magunko Road for about 14 years. And he is in the process now of moving into this business, into this building here. So Mike is an autobody shop, this actually works. So as we discussed, we came before you the last time to go from an autobody, Tom's Autobody was going to add another building to their process. Tom McLemmons is Mike's father, so he had permitted in 2017 to move into this building with a division of his autobody shop. And that didn't go forward, he decided to save the same building. So then in 2019, we went from an autobody used to a trucking company. In the, in the building of the trucking company, the changes that we made, we did a, there's a wash bay that was set up in there with water recycling for the vehicles, and that was put in place. It's not entirely online yet, there's a couple of extra steps that they will take while they're doing the refitting of the building. We also permitted at that time through both Conservation and the Planning Board what was to be a salt shed. With the planning board, it was over here, Conservation had us, it was in this area right here. It was never used as a salt shed, it's been a storage area. They decided, they had not at that point went forward with any kind of salt storage. We have, for this application, have reconfigured the, the properties staying the same, the layout of the gravel and what's here is staying the same. We have a septic system in the front that stays the same, we have gas and electric that come across the property and water that will stay the same. We are proposing to screen 35 parking spaces in the rear gravel area, the rear existing gravel area, and have 20 parking spaces in the front. There will be two handicap spaces over here with, I've now separated myself from my plan and I can't read all the numbers, but there were 25 spaces here, there were six along the edge here, the, thank you. And there are, there are a total of 20, so there's parking in this area here and parking along this side here for vehicles that are finished, once they are finished, they can be stacked out in this area here for customer pickup, customer parking, and employee parking will also be out front. And then in the back, this is the area back here where vehicles will be staged for use. There are a couple of things that have changed since the, since we've submitted the plan. One of the comments then came back was, there isn't a lot of, we don't show a lot of landscaping. We talk landscaping, but we haven't really showed anything. So we did add to the plan a series of this, the dark brown areas that are on your plan. We've added a series of shrubs, there's a birch in the corner here, we've done some PGM rhododendrons, and a few other things that if I had my, this mountain, excuse me, I can't read, I don't have, I'm sorry, I can't see them from here. We have mountain and dromedae and we have some, some other low-growing, low ground cover in the front here. So what we tried to do was provide a landscaped perennial shrub area that was in the front that would be mulched. Right now, there's grass that goes right up to the building. There is a walkway there that's paved, but it's going to be reconfigured to enter into the parking lot that's in this corner right here so that the entrance has, it basically picks up the entrance. This area here, from this point where the boulder is back, was always paved right up to the edge of the building. So we have, and now it's gravel the whole way, it was gravel before and paved here. So now what they're gonna, what they're gonna do is take, define the access driveway that goes to the back and provide grass all the way along the side of the building. There is a two-foot-wide stone, stoned trench along the length of the building because that's where the water sheds off. So that was put in so that there's no splatter of water against the building. There is a sign right here for the building, and there will be a landscaped, a raised landscaped bed around. And there will be a landscaped, a raised landscaped bed around that, and that will be planted with perennials each year. The front lawn is, while it's been mowed right now, it's really just thick weeds. So that will be loomed, reseeded and maintained as a lawn from the front. There'll be a fence installed from this corner of the building to the property line and back so that we're screening the property. This would be a stockade fence. And then would, there would be a screened fence here so that basically it screens what's behind there, and then there's a gate here to provide access into the property. The idea is that you can't see from the street, as you're going by in the street, what's happening behind the building. One of the things that was important to the owner of the property, Chris Katsiopoulos, who's the owner of the property, was the entrance. He's been kind of upset about the, how it looks at the street line. So one of the things that he is looking to do, is proposing to do is to put some curbing, granite curbing along his front edge to better define the edge of the road and the, and a grass strip and then to provide a four-foot wide sidewalk for thinking about things in the future that goes across the front of the property. And then it would be grassed, the rest of it would be grassed to the property line and then again, grassed all through the front. So we're not really, we changed things from the original site plan we did in two thousand and seventeen for the autobody in that there's more screening and more plantings and more landscaping. But really the idea is, all of the important things happen inside the building, interior to it. Mike is making a lot of upgrades to the interior that will be specific to his business. And the outside, we're not expanding what's there, we're just basically defining the areas within which they work. And that's, in a nutshell, that's what we're doing. We're looking for a modification of the existing site plan once again to, to go back to a use that that they have an app, tenant for.
All right, thank you. Initial questions from the board?
Just a brief question, I mean, the planet seems pretty straightforward to me for, for the use that's being proposed. And I don't know the, what goes, what's involved in modification. But what was being proposed in the public way, the curbing and everything and the sidewalk, is there any alignment with anything that exists there or is it gonna start and stop?
There's no pavement out there, really. In front of us, there's no pavement, but what we did was we kept it set back at a distance so that should they ever go through and do something with the road, it's some, it's at a point where it makes sense. It would provide a proper right, right of way across the street.
Yeah, no, I understand that, but the question is who, what is determining the exact sequence of the curbing and the sidewalk for a future? Is there any plan for the town that determines? Well, that that would work so they don't have to tear it down?
Well, I think, I mean, I was there this afternoon, right, I took a drive down there and it's a very industrial road, gets more so the further you go down. And Ashland needs small businesses, right, that's what it's there for. But the one anomaly to that is that, and that you, and I don't think you mentioned it, is that right at this property or right at the next property is where the trail begins, right?
Right about.
Upper, the, excuse me, the Trolley Brook Trail.
The Trolley Brook Trail, yeah. And so that's very defined, it's very defined, right? And it's kind of hanging out there, kind of dead ends, right? Kind of dead ends. And I guess the question is, you know, maybe the question is, how, how can, as you're doing those site improvements, how can you envision that little connection to that trail?
Connect the line, whatever's existed, there's a curb there. You don't set it five feet back, or you don't, you kind of follow that line to that curb and that pathway and that sort of walkway.
There's one property in between though, right?
Yeah, there's a.
This white blank.
It's Alberine, yeah, it's a, it's Alberine, Richard, Richard Alberine, he has a, it's a truck inspection shop. And he's been there for a long time. But there's no, I walked, I saw, I walked the trail a lot. And that, there's no, that's a one full open curb cut between those two. So if the, from this proposed sidewalk to the trail is one open curb cut, all asphalt, I'd say.
What about this public comment we got about the sidewalk being a little bit wider? Is there a possibility of that? I think you guys proposed a four-foot sidewalk, making it a little bit bigger.
I think he was stretching his resources to do what he's doing as far as getting it four feet wider if, I thought it came from.
A little bit wider?
I thought if it came from a committee, maybe they might have something to, to help him, support him, fund it to, to make it a little bit wider.
That sidewalk alone, the four footer, I think is something like sixteen thousand dollars. The sidewalk, I mean, we don't have any skyscrapers next to it, so there is a little foot traffic. Four footer, I think it's, you don't, you don't want to turn into like a, a runway, either you're four feet, I think there's takes care of the handicap, kind of matches with. It's more aligned because we're on the curb, a little grass strip, the sidewalk, and then you go on to the grass again and the fence, just talking about the fence in the front.
Yes, there is a, a post rail fence across the front also, at the property, just behind the property line.
So the curb and strip, a strip of grass, three feet, sidewalk. And the grass, you know, from there, over to the front of the building, I mean, we clean like right off the sidewalk, five, six feet back with a post and rail fence, white fence. Can't get any preview of that.
Comments from the board?
I have a question on the, the parking up front, because I, I went by a safe as an eye. I'm thinking it was all gravel and did you say it was stained gravel or?
No, some of it was originally, all the pavement got taken up.
Yeah.
So it, most of that will go back to, and we're removing some of the pavement that was there to try and trade off some pavement to, so that most of this parking out in the front will be paved.
And then, I know the business owner's been in business for quite some time, so, and I, this is pretty thoughtful, but I wanted to see if like, you're reasonably sure between customers parking, waiting vehicles, worked on vehicles, that it wouldn't be exceeding and going on the roadway there?
No, we, between our, our twenty in the front, we've got fifty-five spaces, so that's more than adequate for him and a couple of businesses that will be in there also.
Cool.
Yeah, I mean, I think for me, after receiving the comment, you know, about the relationship to the trail and potentially widening the sidewalk, I'm not sure the right answer about that, it's a little bit of, are we putting the cart before the horse? Again, like where, because I, on the other side of Maguncle Road is the, another site that we dealt with that hasn't been built yet.
That has not been built yet, that would be Zero Maguncle.
Zero Maguncle, where we put aside.
Some interests in the room that have potential there. But yes, that is a site that we did have a ten-foot easement on that the town could therefore move forward and implement a trail. And so when we permitted Zero Maguncle not to get off track, we thought about how do we connect the Trolley Brook, the head of the Trolley Brook Trail on Maguncle to the downtown, to Stone Park.
Are we saying that, that that easement was intended for that purpose and it's across?
I would be confident to say that this board took that, as part of that site plan, we requested that easement, we were granted that easement, right?
We didn't require it, we asked for it.
We accepted.
And accepted it.
Yes, we asked and we accepted.
Just to be clear, you can't require it.
Correct. We accepted it. So we kind of, through that thought process, we said like, okay, how do we connect the trail to Stone Park into the downtown, right? And so with that, we do have a ten-foot easement at Zero Maguncle, whenever that land is developed as the permits were issued probably about a year ago, I would say at this point, maybe a little bit longer. So with that said, there is going to be an opportunity in the future for the Town of Ashland to implement another sidewalk into our multi-use path on the other side of the road. And then as part of that development, there was a couple of parking spots that we were gonna have to access that trail.
Yeah, because I think on the other side of the road from that was Anne Marie's Dance Center, which is all parking. And so there was really no opportunity for a sidewalk on that side. And the same side of the road as Anne Marie's is this lot, right? So it does, we, we talked about, at the time about having that, that the trail would have to switch sides, right? Because it's, it's just messy there, right, like trying to figure it out, so. So I think that's worth looking at, whether it's leaving space, you know, in the, in the same way that we did for Zero Maguncle, that if and when this thing is gonna get more foot traffic, bike traffic, you know, there's an opportunity for that trail to be wider.
I mean, it's hard for me to visualize how this is gonna work. I, I do see the proposed granite curb versus the four-foot sidewalk, and I get it. We can't require you to spend another sixteen thousand dollars to extend that or double it. But we're also potentially allowing a curb that would prevent the town in the future. Again, this is private property, so, is the sidewalk private property as well?
No. No, this is within the layout.
That's within the street right away.
Okay. So, so then if that's. I, I guess, so, so it's, so it's kind of like a gray area? It's not really fully private property because of the sidewalk?
Correct.
I think in that case, we might be able to ask and, and what are your thoughts on an easement there to give the town the ability to extend that sidewalk in the future? And will the curb prevent that from happening? Not you paying for it, but would you be willing to allow the town an easement to extend it? If the town suddenly has money to extend that sidewalk?
So if you look at this area here, there's, there's, there's plenty of room within that area to have both, to extend that sidewalk, make it, to make it wider.
And we already have that?
That's actually old.
Or that's in the right of way.
That's the, that's actually old by the town. Correct, I think the issue is, is the applicant is saying, hey, I'm gonna put in, you know, we did put in a couple of granite curbs to create an edge at the trailhead along Maguncle. So I think the applicant's saying, I want to extend this. And I think this is saying, this is an opportunity where the town is getting a certain length, excuse me, a hundred and twenty feet of granite curb to be installed by the applicant in the, in the, in the town right away at the cost of the applicant.
And, and I appreciate that, but that, my question was, and I think was answered already, that is being lined up with other features that exist there so that we don't end up with a mess going on.
Yes.
So basically, what we're seeing here is that they are proposing beautifying the right of way as, from what it is now. If the town decides or gets money or the plan goes forward and decides that, that has to become an eight-foot.
That's up to the town.
The, the town can do it with no need to, has anybody for permission.
We can essentially move that curb and get rid of it, is that what you're saying?
No, go to.
So that.
Go to the inside.
Yeah.
Yeah, just widen that or repave that, that walkway to make it whatever the town wants, but.
Can I say, if the curb goes in, lines up with the curb in the state for that pathway? I don't have a problem not putting the sidewalk. And the town can come in later on and put a neighbor because it's within their right of that easement, there's plenty of room.
Well.
As long as the curb doesn't prevent that from happening.
That's, that's a possibility, but I, I think this is also maybe foreseeing that in the future, I mean, this, I don't know how much pedestrian traffic there is there, but I mean.
I get it, although in more prosthetics, curb and things.
So because we're discussing, what I'm now getting clarification is not private land. We're sort of discussing the placement of a granite curb on public property next to a sidewalk that the public could pay to expand. I for one am now conflicted because it's not clear to me if I understand how that public space impacts the trail that is actually there, that actually exists. It's not a futuristic trail, it's literally physically there. Who has that knowledge? Who can tell us from the Trolley Brook? Is there like a committee? Is there someone and the Trolley Brook people that can say to us what the intention of that public space is relative to the trail? I mean, that's public space, right, not private?
Yeah, I think the intention of that public space would be to develop, well. Maguncle Road as it exists is a broken down asphalt roadway with no curbing, no edge, no anything, right?
So the curb in your opinion is intended as a public use?
This curb is intended as a public use and it's, in, in my eyes, it's connect, it's, it's intended to create an edge to the street, right? Which right now does not exist, right? I think for all matters and looking at the plans of the, of that alter did for the Trolley Brook, excuse me, for the Upper Charles Trail and for, to, to say, how do we connect the Upper Charles Trail to the downtown? I think it is, I can assume and I'm with confidence to say that within the Maguncle right away, the Town of Ashland at some point needs to put a sidewalk in to connect to the, to the, to the railroad crossing, which I do know is on the State Transportation Improvements District, which is going, which is coming up in two thousand and twenty-four to add sidewalks at Cherry Street. Right now, there's no sidewalks, the sidewalks end on Cherry Street and then they just kind of become broken asphalt. There's no sidewalks over the trail and or to Stone Park.
And to make it handicap accessible too.
Correct.
So nothing about this plan as proposed jeopardizes what you just said? Okay.
I mean, that's a good point though about the curb, is that curbing, like, I, I like, I mean, obviously applicants put thought into that, but is that curb now gonna be handicap accessible for the sidewalk or are we just putting literally a?
You're gonna have to have.
It's handicapped accessible as it comes into our driveway, it will be sloped at the, here. So as it comes into our driveway, it will have the proper sloping that goes in there and then it will slope down to, as you said, this is one wide open driveway opening.
It's gonna be done with the specs of for handicap, that's just on both sides.
Yeah, I think it's just kind of looking ahead to make sure, because the, the trail's right there, I don't know how many feet that is, but it's right there.
Oh, it's maybe seventy-five feet, I would call it seventy-five, eighty feet, some of that.
Yeah, so it's about, I think, making sure that, that when that curb goes in, it's working with the trail, working with the town to make sure it has the right alignment, the right curb so that someday when that missing piece gets filled in, it's an easy connect the dots instead of some strange jog, right?
I, I think that makes sense, my, my last question would be that, so if you're gonna put a granite curb, you're gonna have to kind of refinish the edge of the road or the town is gonna have to against that curb, who's gonna do that?
The road is missing asphalt and it's gravel and it's a med kit.
So when you put your curb.
My plan was to do a normal lay of, of, of the front of that, or the sections of asphalt missing.
He's gonna work with the D, the owner's.
That's a coordinator with him.
He's gonna coordinate with DVW to say, okay, how do we make this transition? Because you are corrected, that, in, in front of this property and, and is, is really broken down.
It's a mess, yeah.
It's a mess, let's just be honest with each other. It's a mess and it needs to be looked at. And the, the town, the town has deferred maintenance on that way, I would say. And obviously, and, and this area in particular needs some attention.
And I'm willing to do that, yeah, for all kinds of blends of the next curb and next kind of, you know, next curb and all this and that.
Yeah, I mean, for me, and anyone jump in here, but I think the, the attention being given to the curb, and I really appreciate that and doing that right, because that trail, like I said, it's there, it's done, it's, it's ready to be connected to ideally, is maybe of greater component importance, getting that line of the street correct than all the, the stuff closer to the building, really. I mean, that's kind of for you, right, and your customers, so that it looks pretty coming in. But the stuff for the town, to me, is along that street. And even when you talk about planting a lawn and because of the number of parking spaces, this goes to design review committee and we have a couple of great landscape people there, they might say too, you know, maybe you don't want to plant all that grass and mow it and whatever, maybe there's an easier solution, cost-effective solutions. You're not mowing the lawn all the time out there. So, you know, that's my, you know, things that are way, because this, this building also sits way back from the street. And what happens way back there, to me, is less of a concern than, than is what happening right along the street.
So my plan was to work with the Department of Public Works, talk to them, there's an existing curb here for the path, and almost follow that line, I understand there's an open parking lot next to it, the business next to it. If you take the line and you cite it, you know, it blends in, it's, it's that straight shot, which would make sense, but I'll work. But I'll work with the Department on that.
Yeah, it didn't look like rocket science to me when I. Yeah, yeah.
It has to be a straight line.
Exactly.
It's so fluid and it's, and it'd be pointed to the sidewalk.
Yeah, and then the width of the sidewalk, I think, um, you know, I don't, I'm not sure it has to be, I think they, they asked for eight feet. I don't think it has to be eight feet right now. I would like to make sure that that the four feet is the right width for a typical sidewalk. I'm thinking that most of the ones we do are five. Is that, no?
Typical sidewalk's about four feet.
Okay.
Yeah, I can measure the ones in the downtown, I think the ones in the downtown could be five. No, I think the ones in the downtown are four, but I can measure, I'm, I'm having measure and work with the applicant.
With what we're doing downtown and, and accessibility and, yeah. Well, I think that's the width of the trail or, um.
The trails, the, the trail's a wide trail. I think the, 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 the term eight, I think eight feet comes from the term of a multimodal path, right? And I think if you design, when you design multimodal paths for pedestrians and bikers, they, what they request in, in, as the optimal size of a path is going to be eight feet, right? If you go down the trail, the Trolley Brook Trail, that, at time, that is between ten and twelve feet wide. It's a wide trail. And, and so with that said, that was able to be very wide because it was an older abandoned railroad track and it was cleared and we went down, we were able to pave that. That's how wide we got the paving machine to do that, right? So with that said, that's why that's that, that wide. However, when you design multimodal paths and complete streets, the, the desired width would be eight feet. I think that's where that number comes from.
So, I mean, to me, I personally think this is a, a strong project as far as how it's being presented and it looks a lot like something I would expect from a long-term resident, so I appreciate it. It shows some respect for our heritage frankly, and it's nice to see a site returned to its former use. There's actually some value to that, in my opinion. So I, I personally support the project as is with the understanding that we're going to respect Concom's limitation and an understanding that this curb is being built in a public space with access for the town of Ashland to do what we need to, both for the sidewalk and the curb, because we may need as a town in the future, five, 10 years from now, to amend that curb and to make changes to it. As long as that's the understanding, I'm comfortable with the project.
The fence is on the prep, on the private property.
Right, and that's probably just a little fifteen feet off the, the curb and it's sometimes off a little bit. So there's plenty of room, they could put a sidewalk, uh, you know, six, eight feet, whatever. I don't have a problem not putting the sidewalk in now either, leaving, you know, it could be done in a later date. But I think the curb in, so what my thought was curb in, grass, sidewalk, grass. You said, you know, there's a lot of grass on the building way back. So just kind of breaking it up a little bit, so it doesn't look like a driving range. Kind of something like that, that was the idea for that. And, and, you know, the curb in also kind of condensed. They didn't plan on putting, you know, keeping the grass and sprinkler system. You know, right now it's a med pit, okay? You don't trust drive by these flagging, you know, but, and so.
What are you, what are you doing? The big boulders out in front.
Oh, and that big one?
Couple big ones, yeah. They're staying, they're staying.
That won't be moved, it's been moved, but I think it's a nice.
No, no, it's not, we're not moving it. It'd be kind of hard to move, I think. Yes, so, um, if there's no other, I mean, if anyone has any other comments, otherwise, I mean, I think this goes to design re, design, it's required to go to design review.
Correct, it, it's a change of use, a site plan approval. It was, it's, so yes, we did go to design review and I don't want to say we hedged the bet, but we hedged it and we did advertise this to go to the design review at the design reviews next meeting. Uh, so if there's anything in particular you would like to, we would like to design review to look at, such as landscaping, curbing, any of that nature, I'm going to develop a, a list uh, which I can circulate prior, you know, next week, uh, which will be submitted to design review.
I would, I would suggest that, I, I guess the main topic would be what we just discussed, to, to center on that curbing, the fence, the, the, the public realm and any suggestions for, for the grass area to, to make it as sustainable as possible?
I was just going to say, we have that new best practices sustainability list. There's a lot having to do with just sustainable vegetation and that don't need sprinkler systems and things like that. And, um, that can be shared, um, for best practices. And otherwise, the design review committee, um, so there's several landscape architects, landscape designers on that committee that can, I think, really help to give some suggestions about that, but otherwise I think we're, we're good.
Sounds excellent.
My plan is to do it by property and I like it well maintained, you could take it.
Okay.
I'm sure you've been down Magunko Road.
Today.
And when I bought the property, I did the building all like a little good work here, I mean, it was a jump.
Yeah, like I said, it's an industrial area, it's, 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 a lot of people were working there when I, when I drove down, which is what it's intended to be, right? And so I really, I think that granite curb is going to, you know, to stand out and glisten along that road and set a great example for the street too.
Another property down the street, so I'm planning to take in here that, and if it was to do the same thing, it could be a nice industrial.
Love it, yeah. All right.
Put your name in the rock.
No, 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 I don't want that.
Oh, okay. I do, as, it is a public hearing. Um, I do see a hand raised, um, on screen, so, Peter?
Ah, yes, so with that, Mr. Joel Aberman, can you please lower your hand and introduce yourself to the planning board with your name and address?
Lower hand, there we go. Uh, thank you very much. Uh, my name's Joel Arbaitman, I live on Woodridge Lane in Ashland. And I have just a few comments. One, uh, my comments are very restricted because, uh, I don't know whether it was intentional or not, but, uh, on the Zoom session, we were not able to see the easel at all. So all of the discussion that's been going on about the site plan is not, was not visual to the public during this public hearing. I, I, so it made it very difficult to understand what was being discussed. Secondly, I want to comment that, uh, Mr. Matczak made a comment something to the effect, I don't want to misquote, but something to the effect that it's common or, uh, the, the optimal width of a multimodal path is eight feet. That is not the case. Uh, the, the optimal is, is commonly twelve feet, sometimes even fourteen feet if there's space. I mean, obviously you, you're working with constraints. And I also want to highlight, you know, you used as a discussion of sidewalk, you know, what's commonly done in the downtown, four feet, five feet was discussed. We also, not too far down.
I don't know if anyone can, if you can hear us out there, but you seem to be frozen from our end, everyone on, uh, everyone on the Zoom.
The board giving consideration to the, uh, impact on trail users in the area. The real goal here is to connect, uh, the Trolley Brook Trail to Stone Park. That's the real, uh, you know, that's the primary focus right now and that's the, the, the design of the trail. It would be, uh, perhaps worth having a little bit more understanding of the impact of curbing. The good news is if you're a pedestrian and a car is coming down the street, it's less likely to come across the sidewalk. If you are a bicycle in the street, which is what most people will do, I think, coming from the Trolley Brook Trail until such time as Zero Magunko and the easement, uh, become a reality. If bicycles are in the street, uh, on that side of the street, coming off the Trolley Brook Trail and, and I have seen it because I've been there many times, there are some pretty fast moving, very large trucks that go up and down Magunko. And there, if you put a curb in, bicyclists are pinned. They can't, you can't just ride up over the curb and, and get out of the way of the truck, you're stuck there. It becomes kind of a, a barrier that you can get pinned up against. So I'm not saying that there shouldn't be curbing, I'm just saying that maybe a little bit more discussion and understanding what the evolution of and the connectivity of the Trolley Brook Trail to Stone Park is going to be or likely to be and what the safety implications are. That's it, thank you very much.
Second person with their hand up would be Mr. Mark DeSoni. Mr. Mark DeSoni, can you please introduce yourself with your name and your address?
Hey, thank you, good evening, Mark DeSoni, forty-nine Hawthorne Road, Ashland, Mass. And, um, all, all the talk for the, uh, the curb, the, what the town should do, how it's going to do that and the, and the road itself needs to be really worked on. What about, what about the, um, the Trolley Trail itself? Because it has EPA still works on it for inspections. And the, and the building there is, is basically almost on top of it. So they're going to open up a car, a, a used car, whatever it's going to be. It's going to be other chemicals, it's going to be off site if not drained properly. And to the, and to the, Mr. Arbaitman's comments about what he has, what he's thinking there, it's understandable for, for, for the idea for the fourteen feet, which is what it is, fourteen feet, but it's also looking at the, um, the site itself. It's been there for fifty, sixty something years and yet this is the first time it really got talked on for the curb and road. So what's going to happen from there on is my question.
Are you talking about what's going to happen in the empty space between the proposed group granite curb and the trail? Is that your question?
Well, this started off as an agenda item as you want to change from trucking to used car. And then most of the discussion was on the curb. So there's got to be, there's got to be a difference. Why did it get trailed off from what the agenda said to curb and road and then talking about Trolley Brook when it was supposed to be a business?
Well, well, I can jump in. Uh, so Mark, uh, I can first explain, so the proposed use is by, is for, uh, Mike's Auto Body. So it's not a used car, it's an auto body shop, which is allowed use in the industrial district. The, the public hearing is for the modification of a site plan that was last seen by the planning board in two thousand and eighteen. The proposed sub, I mean, the proposed site plan, which is posted online, uh, shows the applicant, no, the owner of the property proposing the installation of a curb with a four foot sidewalk. And so that was, um, the area that the discussion was, was formed around.
So the discussions on the site review is, is more towards that than it is towards what it's going to be as a business? Yes or no?
So can I jump in? I, I remember, I just remember Mark from a recent planning conference that I think Patricia, myself and Kate attended some discussion about that. With site plan review, there's very little that the planning board can actually do to limit use of, like, telling a business, you can't do this, you can't do that, like, you can't be this kind of business unless the bylaws are extremely direct. So for, for site plan review like this, we're not really focused on what, what Mike's auto shop does as much as we are on the design. Generally, planning boards are not really allowed to tell people that they can't do a business use under a site plan review. Look, we're not allowed generally unless our bylaws are extremely specific to say, you can't do this here.
And that's a little more fair to everybody, not to dictate what's going to happen through the planning board, but it's, it's saying what is fair for all around use of what the property is going to be there for. Yes, no?
I, I think we can, I, I think it's, it's an allowed use in the industrial zone, so it's an allowed use. So we're not, it's allowed in the bylaws. It's appropriate.
Okay, so last, last, last of it.
All right, last question, Mark.
Last of it. So the Detroit Brook Trail is still EPA looking at, causing a Niantz, yes or no?
My, my, uh.
The Trolley Brook Trail was reviewed by the EPA and the Mass DEP and, uh, and, and they approved all work out there. So, um, is it still, is it in proximity of Niantz? Yes, it is. Um, however, you know, it, all elements, anytime any soil is, is, is disturbed in this area, that has to go through those approval processes. Uh, and, and the Trolley Brook Trail did complete that, um, when it was installed.
All right. So seeing no further questions.
Can I make one clarifying comment for the record? Because one of our public comments mentioned that they could not see the map and I just want to be clear for the record that the exact map, which is March twenty-second, twenty twenty-three version, is online as part of our public notice, so it is absolutely available to the public.
Thank you. All right, so, um, our course at this time would be to refer it to the design review committee with having them focus obviously on the, the sidewalk and the connection to the Trolley Brook Trail, the vegetation along that edge as well, and, as well as the rest of the property, but really looking at it in a sustainable way. Any other thoughts as we pass it on to them? Okay, then we'd be looking to, well, I don't know, they would be coming back to us?
They'd be coming back to us.
They'll be coming back to the planning board. Uh, our next meeting is on June eighth again. Uh, we have Homer, as I stated, about ten to fifty Main Street. I do not, I, I, they, they have expressed verbally that they will most likely be continued from that requesting a continuance. And so this would be a third public hearing on the, that agenda with twelve to sixteen Union Street coming back.
Are we comfortable putting, it's, it's risky, but we could.
Risky business, but.
But if.
The, the hearing on, on ten to sixty Union Street, how, how much time are we allowing for that one? How do we expect that to?
I, I, I am, I, I verbally, I, they, I talked to them and they verbally kind of stated to me that they will be most, they will be requesting a continuance off of that meeting.
And we have Main Street on that one too.
We have Homer.
Oh, Homer, okay.
Homer, so that'd be Homer, ten, twelve to sixteen Union, the subdivision, and then it would be this one on that night.
I can say that if you're, if you're wanting to come back at our next meeting on June eighth, we can only, like, a thirty minute slot is what I can say. I don't know if that'll, and maybe that'll be enough, but we may be packed that evening. We should be, and we should not need any time once we finish with the design. Okay. We should be done. Okay, work, work well with them. They're, they're our team, they're part of our team. Come back, make it easy for us, okay? All right, so we will look to continue this once again to June eighth. Do I have a second?
A second now.
And a roll call vote?
Vanna Testudski, aye.
Marcelo Hana, aye.
Catherine Jersey, aye.
And Tricia Kendall, aye. June eighth looking scary, folks. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
This was our first, I'm going to say presentation.
Yeah, with a board and an easel. Yes. We like having the board and the easel and, yeah.
I do wonder for logistics if in the, I, I do wonder in the future when that happens, if we should get the exact same thing and put it online? So that it's a shared screen on your computer of what we're looking at? Not a video, but a shared. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. See you next.
See you next time.
I think, you know, when I, when they did that, I thought about it and I think it was too late.
No, it's okay.
To put it up. If I had that, I don't think I'd have called it in. I don't have to.
Thankfully, it's the same one on our website.
It's the same one on our website.
Yeah. But it's not colored on the website.
If they had, she had a PDF on the podium, the podium for the shared screen, she could have tossed it up on the thumb drive where people don't.
We are still getting.
And so I think now I can tell applicants, whatever you share, they'll have a thumb drive on the podium so you can share your screen. Because I can give the podium access through that way. That was a learning curve.
Yeah, I was going to say, we're still working out the kinks. We're getting better, but working out the kinks of going back live, technology and old school, you know? We'll get there. Okay, so next on our agenda, oh, next on our agenda is the joint meeting with the community preservation committee. I think maybe it's just Aaron, right?
Yeah, Aaron is on and Aaron's coming on. And he just appeared.
All right. Aaron Led, Chair of the CPC.
I'm sorry.
No, did you have something to say?
No, I just wanted to say two note, we received two sets of questions, two from Anna, two from Kate. Both sets of questions have been shared with Aaron, so.
No, no problem. I think just, just a quick note, as we have been using the time that we have on planning board to start, to educate ourselves about various committees, various groups around town, I thought it would be good to talk about CPC a little bit because then all five of us, Kevin, if he was here, all six of us, would have our minds on potentially how to use funds that are available there. And part of the role, well, really the main role of the representative from the planning board to be on CPC, which is what I'm filling in right now, is to keep an eye out for those opportunities. But I think five or six pairs of eyes are better than one. And we can all possibly, you know, spot ways that these funds can be utilized best in our community, especially with two of you on the comprehensive plan. That's obviously something to keep in mind as well. So Aaron, I think first, first of all, I appreciate you being here, taking some time. And I think the first question maybe is just about, just to introduce us a little bit to the CPC, the fund, where do the funds come from? How do they get into the Ashland account? Like, how do we get these funds? And then how can they be used? Is that, is that fair enough?
Sure.
All right, thank you.
I'll give a maybe five-minute history lesson and then a couple minutes of stories and give you a background on CPC. So CPC has been around for 20-plus years. Ashland is one of the first adopters of the policy. It's passed by town meeting. It's an additional tax levy. Don't ask me to get into the details of how much the tax is, but it is a match from the state. So roughly 30% of revenues come from the state, 70% come from the town of Ashland. You can tax at various levels. I'll call them one, two, and three, meaning three is the highest level CPC tax, two is next, and one is lower. And Ashland is currently level three. We currently generate somewhere in the, you know, million dollar a year in revenue for CPC. Then over a course of time, you project things out in the four categories. So you can do projects in open space, housing, historic, and recreation. And you have separate accounts for those, and you also have a general fund. So you can decide, hey, I don't want to make it something specific. I can use general funds within those and goes from there. So every year, we work with the finance team to give us the, what's our actual numbers? And then projects are either paid in cash or they're bonded. So we have some projects that are bonded for 15, 30 years. So the high school, the athletic fields are bonded and we're paying off the debt on those. And those come due at various timeframes. So we have currently, if you go to town meeting, you see this, or an article every year of like approving, paying the bond payments. So those are coming due in the next couple of years. So like we will pay them off and we'll have more revenue each year. And then we're a bank. So people come to us with requests. So we have an application process and somebody comes to us and says, hey, I'm interested in applying for funds. You know, we go through an approval process, we pick it at the town meeting and go from there. And I think it might be helpful actually just to run through a project and actually relate it here. I'm not going to talk specifically about what you guys just did with McGonko Road, but I'm just going to talk in a general sense because I think it shows something. When the Trolley Brook Trail was first proposed, it originally included McGonko Road as a connecting trail. And the CPC turned to the applicant, which was the town, and said, you can't include McGonko Road in that application because you don't own the land and the current design is a sidewalk. So it checks two areas of concern. One, CPC funds can't be used when you don't own the land. The applicant has to own the land. And two, sidewalks are not permitted use. So they don't really count as recreation, they don't count as open space. So there are legal precedences that kind of get at this kind of gray area. What's the definition of recreation? What's the definition of historic preservation? Churches have come under controversy for historic preservation, sidewalks have come under controversy for recreation. So there are various things that have been proven by case law that get at like allowable use. It's no different than zoning per se of like, you guys have case law that says what's allowed in zoning, what's not allowed. So CPC kind of follows a system or statute that says certain things can be used for those categories, certain things can't be. So in the case of the McGonko Road project, we said, hey, we'll do what the town owns from the area you were talking about all the way to Memorial Drive, but McGonko Road will have to be piecemealed or gone from there. So from a like, how do you get it done type of thing, the town can go through one or two processes. It could say, all right, we will buy land as open space. We'll say, hey, we'll buy land to create trails. Or it can create shared use area. So kind of the thought process of funding is like, we're an available funding source for things. So if the town said, hey, that's public right of way, let's build a four-foot wide sidewalk, CPC funds can't be used for that. If you said it was a shared use trail, then CPC funds can be used for it and can go from there. So that's part of it. I guess the other quick one to mention is we got questions about like affordable housing. Those are scenarios where it generally happens in one of two ways. CPC gives money to a affordable housing trust for a bank to either buy credits or build housing or allow for affordable restrictions. And that organization has basically request CPC a fund of money and they get that money and use it as they need to. Or it's on a project-by-project basis. So you have a project come before planning board and the applicant proposes, you know, 10% affordable. And the town could say, all right, we're going to pay for 30% more affordable housing units using CPC funds. And as a result, that property then gets a deed restriction, which says 30% of those housings are always affordable because you use CPC funds. So just a quick history of CPC, a quick example of how projects fill out, you know, requirements of owning the property, how can go from there. And I can kind of go back to the questions you asked in email, but I can pause for a moment and see if I at least am on the right track of what you guys want to know.
Yeah, I'm just going to have kind of an open mic here. So when you guys want to just jump in, just jump in as our.
I have a quick question, pretty simple. Thank you, Aaron. The use of that money for recreation or any other projects, is it restricted to hard costs? Or for example, we were talking about the project we just.
No, it can be used for planning money, it can be used for design money, it can be used for legal fees. So in the case of like open space, you could say, hey, we're going to pay $50,000 for legal fees and planning work to go acquire that open space. So it does not have to be hard cost, it can be.
Can be soft cost.
Planning quotations kind of thing.
That's good to know because we are getting into the rhythm of this conversation about the trails and about the need to have definition. And what the trails need is some type of design and more professional analysis to try to set up standards. That would be a good way to kind of propel that forward, to use some of this money when it's available, to have the trails committee give a little more reality to it through the sign. But then the town, all the boards can actually look for what happens on that part of town if there is a more solid understanding of what's entailed. Does that make sense?
Yeah, Aaron, is there red flags on that that you see? Like, is that, is it because, you know, that maybe the trail isn't going to be always on town-owned land or something? Is there roadblocks like in something like that? How would we think about that?
I didn't quite get it what the, like, specific money would be used for. So it sounded like you would hire a designer to help with like scope type of thing.
Yeah, scope or general standards of different type of profiles to use on section A, B, C, and D of the proposed trail, whatever, something that actually is more tangible.
I mean, Joel is still on the call and he's part of that Upper Charles Trail. And the plan kind of did outline that type of specificity in the design of like certain sections are on-road usage and certain sections are off-road and where the design specs for those kinds of things. So the plan did outline options like that. And McGonko is a great example of the proposed plan. They didn't say, hey, we're going to build a trail through the woods, we're going to have an on-road experience along McGonko because the town doesn't own the properties along it. So the Upper Charles Trail in its plan did outline sections that say, hey, you know, the Trolley Brook Trail, it's a trail. We own the property, we can create a 12-foot wide path, but in other sections, it's on-road. And that's where we get into the little trouble of CPC can't be used basically as a public works project, can't be used as like, all right, we're going to pave the road and put a sidewalk in. It can be used, and this one I think is the gray area I'd have to check more on, is like Hopkinton, right? I don't know if you're following what Hopkinton's doing, but they're building their Upper Charles Trail as, I'm not going to call it a wide sidewalk, but they're, you see what they're doing, right? Creating a road and then an eight-foot wide bike lane and then a sidewalk. So they, that's a really gray area. I can't begin to get that details, but they're creating a design feature that is like a trail within a road system type of thing. And I think they just paid with that with state money, but I can't comment on the specifics of that. Did I answer your question?
Yeah, in a way, I think it's good to know that soft costs are part of what's allowed.
Yeah, and they give it a soft cost towards a hard cost. So it's harder to just say, all right, we're going to have a pool of money and hire an architect and have them be on call type of thing. It needs to be like, all right, we need these soft costs to lead to property acquisition, construction.
Yeah, understood. I think that's clear. Thanks.
So the thing that grabbed my attention is this idea that you can have a private developer in front of us who hits a 10% affordable mark. And in theory, the planning board could reach out to CPC or to the Affordable Housing Trust and say, hey, consider applying to make this a 25% affordable project through a, what do you call this, a?
A deed restriction.
Exactly, a deed restriction. So that kind of, I have to say, that got my attention.
Yeah, so I think you should think of that as a negotiating tool of like, you want to get as much out of the developer as possible, but you can think of the CPC funds as an opportunity should the economics not match.
So when that happens, can that be done through a multi-year bond? Or does it have to be a one-time expenditure?
Yeah, it's a term limit on the affordability. So basically, you're buying the affordable units for a certain period and that's usually what you bond for. So let's, it's complicated math, but let me do a quick one. Let's say an affordable unit is $100,000 and a market rate is $150,000. So it's a $50,000 difference. And you want to do a 30-year limit. 30 times $50,000 is 1.5 million. So that's what you're paying over a 30-year bond. So you would, you would ask CPC for 1.5 million to do the difference and that's kind of how the math would work. Again, that is.
And if it's done that way.
Finance 101, super, super fast, but that's a quick.
So if it's a 30-year bond like that, does it still count for our affordable housing numbers?
As long as the bond is in place. So yes, so this, just now, some communities are running into, because CPC's been around for about 30 years now, they're just starting to see, all right, our bond is redoing and you can redo it again. Or you can say, no, it's going to expire, we'll let those units go back to being normal per se. So yes, and I haven't seen 30, I've seen 49, I've seen 99. You can do all three of those, you could do 100-year everything. But yes, they are temporary restrictions.
And then the other thing that got my attention, and I'm just perplexed by it, is the historic restoration and just trying to think of what that means. So the example in your email to my question was an interesting one because it was historic restoration of churches. And I know churches have really unique status oftentimes. They're oftentimes nonprofits, they have certain IRS protections. The historic restoration that's allowed by CPC, can that be done within a context of a private landowner project? Like, let's say there's a project that has an element to it that has historic value. The developer says, I can't afford to retain this piece of my property. I just don't have the money to restore this historic element. Does CPC allow? And who would have the application power in that context? Would it be, which?
Are you saying like a? Yeah, and that's why the church thing got kind of gray. Are you saying like a private homeowner has a historic house and they want to use historical CPC funds?
Sure, or a private landowner. The church, I feel like is a bad example because it's not always private. A lot of churches are semi-quasi nonprofits and is it only applicable to churches using historic preservation or is it applicable to private landowners?
To clarify, when I said that, churches have been ruled not eligible to use historic funds.
Got it, okay.
Other entities have been allowed to.
Okay. And so you can in fact do it if you're just a general private landowner. I'll use a live example. You own a historic train station. Can that in theory?
Yeah, the private owner in some ways.
And part of your private development, you theoretically say, and this is not a project before us, so I think I can make this up, you theoretically say, I have to tear this thing down because it's too expensive to preserve. Can CPC funding be used to help preserve it?
What I would need to check is what your definition of who then owns it? Meaning, are you asking town to acquire the property and own it and then?
Can it be done through historic restriction?
Good question that I would not feel comfortable answering right now.
Okay.
Is that fair enough?
Yes. Peter has something to add.
Typically, in that case, yes, the town would have to enter into an agreement for the historical restor, for historical restriction.
And CPC could fund that element of preservation?
Yeah. And I've, running the CPC in a different position I had in the town of Hanover, we did get into a situation when a church, the First Congregational Church of Hanover, which was directly across the street from Hanover Town Hall, needed new windows and its congregation could not afford those windows. And so they did come to CPA, the town of Hanover voted and they approved them. And we approved, I think it was $80,000 for them to restore, indoor replace the windows with historically accurate windows. And then we took a restriction back on that end regarding those windows. So there's always a legal mechanism that has to be put in place when money is sent out to a private organization.
And my last question was open space acquisition. Is that defined for CPC as a specific thing? Or again, let's say there's a private developer and the town wants to purchase a chunk of land or do an open space, what is it called? Open space, is there an open space restriction or just an open space acquisition?
I think what you're getting at is let's say a developer has 10 acres and they're going to build an all 10 of them. You could turn to the developer and say, all right, build on five and apply for CPC funds to protect the other five. Is that what you're referring to?
Or to build a playground, let's say, that's public.
Now the public, now the public, you're talking about land acquisition because you're hoping the playground is public land. That's a little different.
So you can do both? You could do land acquisition or an open space restriction?
Yeah, so again, there's two thoughts there. There's acquiring the land and basically saying, okay, we're going to buy that land from you and the town is going to own open space parcel and protect it. And the key thing I think to think about with open space protection is we ask for somebody to be the steward, right? So in many cases, a nonprofit becomes the steward of the open space. So think of Warren Wirths for a moment. So think of Warren Woods for a moment. That is, um, Mass Audubon. So Mass Audubon owns the restriction, basically. Think of it as, um, in some towns, like I grew up in Lexington, the Conservation Commission is strong enough that they own land and they protect it. We don't quite get into that in Ashland, so in this case, a nonprofit sometimes becomes the steward of the land and steps in on the open space. Again, complicated, but I think I answered that correctly.
Makes sense, thank you.
Thank you.
Other questions for Erin?
The two that I had in writing, um, you know, what opportunities does the committee see to work with the board on planning? I think it's, again, understanding what the options are. I gave you the general sense, and you could see, like, you literally have two or three projects in front of you that kind of connect with our options. And so knowing knows as a project comes before you of like, oh, we'd love to continue doing an open space recreation trail, but it can't be a four-foot sidewalk. Or we'd love to do more affordable housing, but we know it needs to either be acquired by the town or whatnot. So I think it's just kind of understanding how we fit in. I know Tricia's learning and trying to understand him. I'm still learning. Uh, I think I'm chair like two or three years now, but the previous chair was chair for 23 years, so I know there's definitely a learning curve. It goes from that. And then number one, it says, uh, what are our plans of pursue affordable housing? Just comment again that CPC is a bank. I do my best to recruit people to apply, but we are not a, um, you know, we're, we're not like, uh, we're, we're not a developer, we're not a proposer. We, we don't do projects ourselves, we ask for other people to come to us. So very rarely does CPC go out and do something. It's more of encouraging people to apply or soliciting ideas or getting applications. CPC itself can't be an applicant. Is that clear?
Yes.
Any, uh, any other questions? Yeah, so these are, um, a lot of the questions that have come up are the things that I've been drilling Erin on for the past years. And versus trying to, uh, explain it myself because I think my grasp on it is still tentative. I really appreciate Erin, you coming in. I know you've, you say you've only been the chair two or three years, but you, you, you sound like you've been a lot longer, like you have so, you know, a lot of information, a lot of, um, examples to try to explain things. So I, I appreciate that. And, um, and now I feel like everyone has a little bit of understanding, but to ask more the questions to see if we can find more areas of planning board, comprehensive plan initiatives that may align with the, the funds that, that CPC has and available and wants to distribute to the right places.
I, I would just end with a, with a question that like, on, on, on average, what is the, the amount of funding that's, that's available? I mean, we say that we collect about a million dollars a year. Does that mean, does that get always used constantly or, or accumulates in some years? What, what's the typical behavior of that account?
Yeah, so, uh, in the, the 20-year history of CPC, we have fluctuated between a balance, meaning what we have is cash, I'll say, um, between a million and $2 million. Over the next five to seven years, we go up to $5 or $6 million because we are spending less than we're taking in and our bonds are coming due. So High School, Oak Street, and I think Warren Woods are all coming due. So as a result, our current, uh, inflow of cash in the next five to seven years, um, is adding to the total. So I think right now we're at like three and a half or four million, don't quote me on that, but we're in somewhere in that range, and that will continue to grow because we currently, um, have more money than we're spending. As a result of, again, we can take up to about, their current bond payments, about $600,000 a year for projects. So another way of saying that is...
I mean, I think this isn't...
Another way of saying that is, we could spend $5 million on one land acquisition project, then not do anything for three or four years, or we can do half a million to $600,000 projects annually and basically be flat. Now, that depends on local tax revenues and match from the state. There's an organization that lobbies for that match from the state, and governors have held it occasionally in budget processing, but it has gone through the last year, so it's not a guaranteed amount. In case you're curious, it comes from, um, when people pay their legal fees when they apply for like planning documents type of thing. I'm messing that up, but title, like title searches and stuff like that. So anyways, um, that's where all that money comes from.
Yeah, and you can actually find those numbers online, like Ashland is listed online, and what we have in each of those categories, you can just look it up, so at any time.
So it's, it's all public record and whatnot.
Yeah.
And is this knowledge kind of shared with every committee out there? I mean, I'm just surprised, it's so, there's a wealth of information, right?
Yeah, well, that's what, but what Erin and, um, a lot of the more longer-term committee members do is that they, they actually ask different organizations, do you have anything for us this year? Are there any projects you're thinking about? Let, you know, let's talk to us about them. So they do, in a, in a sense, like solicit and try to remind people that it's there, but they don't, like, like Erin says, they're, they're just the bank, they're not the developer. So that, you know.
Yeah, and like, in the case of Hopkinton CPC this year, they had four $1 million applications for one year. So they ran into like, all right, we can't fund everything. So they finished, they completed their cricket pitch, but they did not do a $1 million playground rehab at one of their elementary schools because they just couldn't do everything. So sometimes the floodgates open and everybody applies. So in the case of, I just was speaking to the Hopkinton colleague, and they had, they had four huge projects come before them in one year. So that's, that gets me a little bit at like timing. So, you know, again, any large CPC project, and large is anything over $10,000, has to go before town meeting. So, you know, if you run into a project right now and you're like, oh, man, we'd love to use CPC funds, you have to wait until it's approved at town meeting in fall before you can really confirm that funding type of thing.
I mean, I, go ahead.
Are there any case studies of all the projects that was funded by CPC somewhere that's easily?
Yep. If you go to community, uh, what's the, communitypreservation.org, there are coalition who acts all this, you can search by town, you can search by type of project, you can search by year, you can search, there's, the, the project database has everything. So you can see, you know, Boston does about 150 projects a year. You can see Ashland probably has 150 in our 20-year history. So you can see what they are, it shows the dollar amount, what is it, open spaces, is it historic? So great resource. And also does somewhat again, that history, so it talks about what's allowed, what's not allowed. So I was just looking at an article there that talked about why sidewalks aren't allowed type of thing.
I wonder how many missed opportunities we have with all those big projects that we have lost.
So now we know.
Two, three years.
I, I think for me, this brings up the importance of maybe having one of these meetings with Affordable Housing Trust because I think that is a massive opportunity to, to use this money for, to turn some of those 10% projects into something else, something bigger.
Uh, ju- just in the vein of what Anna was saying, and actually Katie was thinking of the same thing. Just, just a hypo- a hypothetical example, and Erin, tell me if this is crazy, but is, would it be if there's an opportunity for the town to say to acquire a piece of land for whatever reason? And, and just purchase the property and then, um, align itself or, or through some mechanism with the developer to do a fully affordable housing project? And then, or, or, and then the, the revenue of that to, could go back to the fund or to the town or could be sold? Is, is something like that even feasible?
Yeah, I, I think the second half of that, no, like money doesn't go like back in the CPC type of thing. So if you said like, um, the Affordable Housing Trust, they can get income other ways. So I think they would be the conduit of like, if they had units on the land and had revenue and they can do that type of work, but CPC, if it's, you can't sell it back. It, that's the one thing with CPC is it's forever type of thing. That if you acquire a land for open space, it's, once you sign the grant agreement, it's kind of open space forever, so, um...
Okay, but, but in that case, then, let's say on, on, under that example, uh, if, if, if the town, uh, kind of partners with a, a developer to do affordable housing, and then, uh, I guess, somebody would have to take care of that property if it's a forever thing. It, it, but is, is something like that ever done?
Yes. I mean, towns purchase land and do fully affordable.
Yes, it's just the second half of that, of like money going back to CPC, no.
No, no, that's fine, that's fine.
Yeah.
Okay, all right.
I think it's just that...
Acquisition, yes, like revolving fund, no.
Yeah, it just gets complicated, um, because at least at the moment, Ashland, the Housing Trust in Ashland isn't really set up to, to do that, right? For the, the resources and things you need to, to be a developer, you know, basically. So, um, the opportunity is there, but we, we may not be there. There might be a lot of pieces to put in place, you know, before that could happen effectively. So, um...
But they probably have resources for a restriction, right, on a private property?
Yeah, yeah. I mean, yeah, so it just, it just, um, it's a big work in progress, I think. Things that, but opportunities that everyone, now everyone is aware that we can all kind of think about how to move things forward, right?
So assuming like opportunities like the comprehensive plan process or the net zero initiatives that the town is looking at, those are not the buckets that the CPC can...
It has to, it has to fit in one of those buckets, and it can't be, like, like Erin said, there's some restrictions. It has to, someone has to own the, the land, right? Yeah. So there's kind of, it has to, it has to fit in order, you know, because there have been things that I have been asking Erin over the course of the past year, but none of them have fit yet, right?
Examples or case studies that's there out there and what other towns have done? I'm sure there must be, um, some interesting examples that we can adopt.
I mean, Peter's email, I thought, was spot on, where it's like the cat, the basic category is open space, housing, historic preservation. We need to own the land, or if we don't own the land and it's privately owned, then CPC can be used for restrictions, right?
Right.
So that are essentially negotiated with the private landowner. So it's not like we essentially almost own, it's like an easement over ownership, kind of. We own a piece of...
The thing is, is you, as an attorney, you know the bundle of sticks, right? You, you know, is, is when you buy land, you have these rights. You know, when you use open spa-, you know, if it's for open space, you're, you're buying property rights, and the, and the vehicle to protect those property rights would be a conservation restriction, you know? And, and so this has been done in the, the town of Ipswich, which I have experienced, that's where I first really got my first job in planning. I was actually organizing and reviewing the conservation restrictions the town of Ipswich actually held, right? So the town of Ipswich has had a very progressive, um, movement, um, going back 20 years where they approved a $10 million bond, and they've used that bond money to go out and buy land, hard land and/or conservation restrictions. And now they still, they continue to do that. And then one of the things is they continue to use CPA funds and, and is to buy land property rights in some cases, which is a conservation restriction. And so that is that, that vehicle, that mechanism of how you protect that. And obviously, it's in perpetuity. As Erin speaks of, it doesn't go away. You have to look in perpetuity when you, when you look out and you invest with CPA funds.
And you have to be careful when you're doing that because it can, it, it can work against you in some ways if you didn't look far enough ahead about exactly what you might be using it for.
Yeah, I was going to say, it's a bucket that everyone wants a piece of.
Yeah.
Right? And so you use it for one thing, you're giving, you're giving up some other potential use.
Well, well, even because the, what I'm saying is because the, it's forever, there, there are certain ways the funds have been used that now it's a little tricky when there's a ch- when there's a potential change, right? So, um, and sometimes those are hard to predict, e- even though the change is good, right? So anyway, it, it, obviously, like everything else, it, it gets complicated. But, uh, but anyway, I think we need to, given the time of our meeting, we kind of need to move on. Erin, I really appreciate your time, um, this evening, and I'm sure we will be, well, I hope that the planning board will, you know, potentially in the future, have some good proposals for the, for the CPC or suggestions to other parties for CPC, CPC funds. So thank you for that.
Sounds good. Thank you all.
All right, bye, Erin. Okay, um, the number five on the agenda is the MBTA presentation for the planning department, but we are gonna wait for that because, again, it's getting late at night and we're getting a little tired, and that's an important thing we want to be able to concentrate on. But, but the presentation is ready, and Peter, um, was going to email it out?
So I'll email it out tomorrow. I'm, I'll have Alvaro just send it out as a PDF, and then everyone can take a look at it, and then with any questions, they can kind of come back to me. One thing, uh, element on, I believe, slide 10, is I tried to, um, map out, um, kind of example densities, um, you know? And, and so this whole zoning exercise, which is the MBTA zoning, calls for the zoning of, um, 1,124 units in the town of Ashland, right? That's 15% of our overall 2020 housing units. And so within the presentation, just to get a kind of a taste of, of a, of a density per acre, um, I did pop in a slide and I measured the Village of the Americas as a whole, um, and then also the, the density of 100 and, um, 100, 130 Chestnut Street, which is that front portion, which we just went through, right? So I used that example, then I used the 10 to 501 Pond Street example, and then I also used the Cirrus example, um, and then I also, in addition, used, um, uh, 10 to 16 Main Street. And so that would just add a flavor of the densities of what they're thinking.
Are we going to move the presentation so that we can hear the presentation next time?
Yes, yes, we just, I just don't think it's the right...
No, no, that's great. I just want to make sure we actually hear, give, do it next time.
Yeah, so I would say this will give people, it might be even a bit better because people have time to review it, note questions. I would avoid send, I would avoid sending questions. I would just note them so that we all can hear the question and answer.
Okay.
When, yeah, was Elvaro, was you going to give the presentation?
I was going to give the, I was going to give the presentation. Alvaro and I were working on it.
Okay.
And it really comes down to what it is, right? Obviously, I know there's some knowledge of, of what's going on. There's a housing seminar coming up I'm going to go to, I'm sure they have three MBTA stuff on it. But then also, we've done some analysis on some changes that we could make, um, which we could therefore gain some compliance. And or the question is, do we want to, you know, bring it, you know, fold this into a larger planning study?
So, so I would say, let's make sure we just keep this as an agenda item, and then if, as has happened before, everything falls off our agenda for June 8th, hey, let's talk about MBTA, it's already on the agenda. And if we don't get to it next time, we don't get to it next time, but it's, it's there as always a backup. So, sound good?
Perfect.
Okay, great. All right, so then I did want to have a brief discussion. One thing we want to do tonight is the Planning Board Officers Reorganization, um, uh, because we always do that, the first meeting where we have a full board, because who knows when someone can be gone. And, um, but before that, we do have the public comment discussion, and if we want to give a few minutes to that, this is something we brought up before. People, there definitely wasn't agreement on it about, about we, what we should do. I didn't want to tackle it as we were coming back into the room at, for the first time. I thought we had enough to handle. But, uh, what, what do we think about opening up? I guess what, what this would be doing is something similar to this, what the Select Board does, is at the beginning of each meeting, offer a time for general public comment. If possible, not related, I mean, people could say whatever they wanted, but if possible, not related to projects. I would prefer public comment for projects be done during those projects, but, but they could say whatever they want. But what our meetings typically don't do is give it, give the public a chance to comment about something that may never be on our agenda, an idea they had or something like that, right? There's, besides emailing the planning board, there's no, there's no spot for that in our, in our typical agenda. So, but...
I mean, I think we, we all had some thoughts for it, some thoughts against it. I think that there's no harm in trying it and seeing if it works for our board. If we, we seem to be more on target as far as time, like we're not having meetings past 11:30 at night or 11 o'clock at night. Like we're not having meetings past 11:30 at night or 11 o'clock at night as much. So I feel like there's room for this and we should give it a shot and maybe agree to try it for a few meetings and then have another discussion. I don't think we have to commit to doing it forever. I, I would suggest that we have a test run and then come back to discuss it.
Other comments?
You said, I think you talked to town council and I don't, like, I guess there was nothing to report. If you didn't say that, any, bring anything back or?
Um, it was just about that you can put restrictions on it. You know, you can say one time, you know, sometimes we do two minutes, one time to the mic, right? You can do that. You can't put a restriction on, I don't know when this would happen, but if there's 50 people in our audience, if you open it up for one, you open it up for all, right? But I guess that's part of the test. Normally, we don't have that problem, right? So there's some, there's some risk. Say if, you know, if that for whatever reason happened, you could be here till 11:30 to get through your agenda, right? Is it likely? I don't think so. So that was, that was the nature of our discussion.
So, I mean, people don't always read or, you know, or follow what we are gonna say, obviously. But we could, because we, we do have big projects where sometimes we have lots of people who show up, at least remotely. So that could happen in this room. So maybe when we put this on the agenda, we make a little short statement that a project-specific comment generally occurs at the time that the project is heard. So if you are showing up for a project that's on this agenda, try to speak your comment at that time. That type of statement, I think, should be on our agenda. So that when we post a public agenda, we're essentially inviting the public to come to speak generally and we're asking them to politely reserve the project-specific stuff till later in the evening. So that if there's 50 people in here, all discussing a project scheduled for 9:30, they wait until 9:30. We can force it, but we should ask.
Right, right.
My, you can take this as, I'm just, I'm curious about those examples of what that general questions to the planning board would be versus what happens in a select board meeting, right? They're looking at the bigger picture, that they're kind of looking at certain topics. It's affecting larger community versus what we are doing is very project-specific. And if I see questions, I would think it is more project-specific versus just coming in and. I'm, I'm, I'm just curious of what kind of example questions are we expecting that we've realized that they've come our way and we've not been able to address because we have a full agenda or it is not? I don't remember seeing any such topics, but maybe something that I haven't.
I think, you know, it could be, just thinking about recently, recent things that we've talked about. You know, someone could, if, say we hadn't talked about this, but someone could come up and say, you know, I'm really concerned about PFAS in the water. Like, is that a planning board thing? What can be done about it, right, kind of thing? Just questions like that, that may not even, I mean, may have limited even involvement over board because maybe they don't know who to ask the question to, right? So, so I, like Anna said, I think it's, I think it's a test and to see if it's something that we, yeah, that, that's valuable, that, that allows, you know, allows that kind of discourse. But without causing an opening for the disruption of our meeting. I'm definitely not interested in intentional disruption or, you know, of our, of the process that we have to go through, right? Like everyone else can leave, we have to be here until we go through our agenda. And that's, and that's very different. I don't, I don't expect that kind of abuse of it. But, you know, and the only way to see is to kind of test, I guess.
I mean, I'll tell you, when I go to like hang out with friends in Ashland and they're like, what are you doing in the planning board? And I talk about what we do. My friends and neighbors kind of talk about planning in general. And they'll say, well, why is this happening in Ashland? Why is that happening in Ashland? And these are really generalized planning kind of questions. And a lot of times I'm like, you don't like the way the zoning is structured? Well, you can go to town meeting. Zoning is within our jurisdiction as well. So I, I would say the biggest town-wide policy thing that we could hear about is just people who are, they're just don't know what to do about something relating to planning and they want us to consider a zoning change, which is our jurisdictions, like clearly. We don't generally do that as a planning board yet. We have, although we, I think when I started, Tricia did that with.
That, that board.
With the zoning, with that board, yeah. But this board with its membership has not done zoning yet. But it's totally about the entire town, has nothing to do with specific projects. Unless we solicit that or allow the public to come to us, there's no opportunity for them on our agenda, zero, to bring that up.
Well, I, I, I've been listening to, to, to everybody. I'm not convinced about the usefulness of it yet. I, I think, I understand the, the intent. I agree with where Deepa was going with it. The, there are boards that have a different scope. And I see this board of more, slightly more technical than the Select Board. And trying to be a Select Board B, I don't think it, it will help, it will be disruptive, like what you were saying. I, I believe unless there, there is a targeted system that doesn't become arbitrary, then, then, then all the bets are off. I think if, if we, if, if the objective is to open up a, an avenue for everybody to, to touch on things that are not project-specific, then I, I, I say, let's, let's make an open agenda item that says exactly that, that people can write and say, I want to talk about this other thing. And then it becomes part of the agenda as opposed to a free-flow commentary that nobody can, can handle, that people are gonna be upset if they don't, if they didn't get to say what they wanted to because it was only 30 seconds per person. It, it, it becomes something that, that derails completely the direction of what we, with our limited time, are trying to focus on achieving. And I think we, we can, we could test it. But it becomes like, like another happy board possibility. And I don't, I, I personally don't see the benefit unless we organize it. I, I'm, I'm okay with the intent. I think the method, it's, it has all the risk of, we, we barely have time to take care sometimes of what we have to take care of.
Yeah, and I'm, I definitely am concerned about that. I don't want it to be, like you said, a social media thing, which is just, yeah, not, not good. But on the other hand, on the other hand, I think without testing it, you don't really know. Because it is different than anonymously hiding behind your keyboard and typing up something on one of the Facebook boards, you know? So I think, I think that is different versus coming or being on the, on Zoom and stating your name and address and then giving your opinion. So I do think that's different.
I think what would be really.
Just a last point on, on, because what you just said is, is kind of the way I was thinking about it. We, we have a very select group of, of residents that constantly attend the meetings and are active and participate and they're interested and, and that is very valuable. There's a lot of others that love to send us comments to social media and just do their complaining. I think that's not that helpful to anybody.
But, but Marcelo, I have friends who live in Ashland who have kids and they cannot come to one of our meetings and wait to talk about projects. They just can't. They can't wait until eight, nine o'clock at night to make a comment on a project that they think about. So it's great that they can call me up because they know me. But I think there's a lot of people in this town who, who aren't, who have issues that we have jurisdiction over, like zoning, like planning, that there is no mechanism on our agenda to be heard. There's just.
Well, there's email. They could always send an email.
Sure, there's email.
Yeah, there's always, there's always a mechanism if, if you want. But I, I, I just remember the, as an example, there, there is a, a, a long process about the, the Main Street project, you know, with forums and people were very, very upset about it or in favor, all that. And, and so then the process started and then we have all these meetings on, on, on the side and really open it up to try to get something good for the town and, and nobody showed up.
It's true.
That is the example of, I think it's more typical than the others.
Yeah, okay, well, I think.
So if no one is gonna show up, then we're not gonna have a problem.
Then we don't really have a problem.
So we can't say, let's not do it because no one is gonna show up. I think we should not be afraid of the public. We have a strong chair.
I don't know, nobody said that we're afraid of the public. Don't, don't say that.
But I, I think we have a strong chair who can organize this. I would suggest that Tricia make a very strong statement, maybe run it by town council at the beginning, that says, our intent is to open a public comment for items that are not on the agenda. If you are here for a project, wait until that public comment. We have certain jurisdiction. Explain what it is, zoning, planning, other jurisdiction. I'm sure Peter can pull a slide from what our jurisdiction is. We ask that you speak to those things, not to some random thing that we don't have jurisdiction on. I think if there's a strong statement like that, a limited time of time, either no one will show or the people that will, I think we can contain. And if it doesn't work, we can stop doing it.
Yeah, I, I think it's a conversation that's worth one more pass with town council just so I, so the ins and outs are understood. But it seems to be, I mean, I think at least our, at least half our board, I think, feels strongly about trying it. And others maybe are hesitant. So let, I think that conversation should happen with, with town council first. And then, you know, maybe we, we, we give it a test. I mean, I'm kind of, I'd like to be optimistic that, you know, once in a while, some good ideas may come out there. I do think it's important to keep that time limit tight, right? So, and that would alleviate some of the concerns about it going into our meeting. Because you just, you just have to have a mass of people, you know, to, to do that, so.
And I would think about a statement that the town council can review so that whatever we say about the public comment is proper, consistent with open meeting law, all that stuff. I think having an agenda that's very specific. My number one concern would be a big project like Avenue of the Americas when we had 150 people or something on the call. When we start doing in-person meetings, we still have the remote option. So that could happen. You could have a big project and 200 people.
You could, you could.
So in that type of situation, our agendas have to be very direct, that we're not opening up a general comment at the beginning for that project. We are waiting for that project to be heard and for the public comment to be part of that context. So can certain people ignore us and do whatever they want? It's possible.
They can, yeah.
So the question would be for town council, can we contain that? Can we say, okay, you're not listening to the instruction, you're gonna have to wait?
You can, you can, my understanding, because I did talk to her about this, is that you can limit time. You can limit ones to the mic. But then the, but the people can say whatever they want to say, you know, about any topic. So that is not controllable by the board.
So if we make that statement, I would say, I would guess the majority of people who are civilized and respectful are gonna listen, right, and they will wait. Those few who speak up, hopefully it's not gonna disrupt the whole thing. If it does, we're never gonna do it again. So I, I feel like if we're very precise about what we're trying to accomplish, I really believe the majority of people out there are not gonna abuse it. The, the Select Board, from what I can see, has not had that kind of abuse.
Yeah, no, I agree. I don't think there's a history of abusing it, so. But I am gonna hold off on it tonight because I, I just think we should, we discussed it again. I think I just wanna have it, I'm gonna come back to it. Well, I don't know if I'll come back to it because we have to see what the next agenda item is. But I think in, in any case, it'll come back very shortly so that we can make a definitive decision on trying or not trying. Okay, fair enough. But again, we're late into the evening and, and everyone's a little foggy. All right, so the next, I think that really the only item on the agenda, because we thankfully covered all of that stuff before, is the board, the board reorganization. So this is reorg, reorganization is kind of a misleading term. We don't have to reorganize exactly, but we do have to confirm leadership for the following year.
Yep.
Yeah.
We do it annually and it's always, it's usually discussed at the first meeting after the election.
Yeah, and traditionally we have waited till we had a, a full board. I mean, obviously, we consider Kevin part of our board, but he's not a voting member for the board positions.
And we're gonna congratulate Anna for winning her reelection.
In a landslide.
Five years.
Five years.
I'm just gonna take it one year at a time.
Yeah, exactly. Exactly.
Two years flew by, so we'll see how five goes.
So, okay, so that said.
I did get sworn in, just so we're clear.
Oh, yeah.
I had to. I made sure this morning.
Great, I, yeah, it didn't even cross my mind.
Had to be done.
So, great. So anyway, this is the, well, Peter usually take over and actually run this part of the meeting. Is traditionally, that's what we have done?
Yeah, so obviously every year we reorganize and we have a chair, a vice chair and a clerk. And so the clerk, the, the vice chair usually works, I mean, excuse me, the chair obviously works with myself and Alvaro on a day-to-day basis. He's sending the agendas, as Tricia has obviously done for the last two years. And then obviously the vice chair takes the, this, the, the reins if, if the chair is not available. And typically the clerk is available for reading the public hearing notices into the, into the record. And that person is, is historically in charge of doing the minutes. However, as everyone knows, we are, our minutes are done professionally, which is a great help to the board. So that's what I can kind of state the three positions are. And then obviously it's up to the board members to promote themselves to, into those positions. And so i- if anybody wants to typically promote somebody into being a chair and or make a motion, that's how everything kind of typically normally happens on an annual basis. The one thing that we do, we will have is at the next meeting, once the, the positions are filled, there'll be a one sheet that we all have to sign and that gets recorded at the registry of deeds, if everyone remembers. And that is used to match up the, your signature on the, anytime the planning board signs an A and R or a subdivision. And so those are on record as your signatures are, so therefore there's no forgery of planning board members.
I'm laughing because I sign like, like this.
So that's kind of that annual item that we always do. So it's a reorg, you know, if anybody wants to put themselves up for that position, you know, I think we can always discuss that.
I, I would humbly say that I, I wouldn't dare challenge the leadership of this board, the three people that, that we have.
I second that.
So I, I do want to say, I like, I'm kind of with Marcelo. I, I like the value of having rotating and I don't think it's practical for us to like every year like the Select Board because it's, it, we're a longer term. And I'm only saying that as I like the idea of it and us to consider it, but I am not ready or interested. And I could happily, if someone wants clerk, I will also happily continue it, but I would happily let someone else as well.
I mean, I'll say that with the comprehensive plan work that I'm doing, I can't speak for Kate, I'm happy with our leadership the way it is. And I also think that Trish and I don't always agree on everything, but having us as chair and vice chair sends the right message. And so I personally think we should continue with things as they are. Tricia is getting into a groove of having these meetings in person. I think her style works for, for this group. And I think we should continue with things as they are. That would be my motion.
I'll second it.
There is some discussion then.
Oh, well, of course, we didn't ask you, so.
No, I mean, I've, I have been thinking about it because it is a, it is behind the scenes. It is a load besides my husband. I talked to Peter and my con, the contractor down the hall, the most of anybody in my life, right?
You've got three husbands, like a board husband, a planning board husband.
That's right, and a, yeah, and a perfect, yeah. So.
I would say we're all apostles, but I forget.
I know, it's, it's, so it's, it's, so it is, it is, there's a lot, like, behind the scenes. But, but that said, you know, I think the comprehensive plan is an equally heavy load and it's just, it really just started now, right? I mean, with that first initial meeting, which I think we're all really excited about to have it actually kind of be rolling. And it's, it's success is just critical, right, that that process, you know, is what we hope it to be. So, so if the board is comfortable with it, I'm thrilled that people seem to be comfortable with me. I'm happy to continue and hopefully continue to improve, yeah, in, in that role. And I'm, I, I appreciate, I do always appreciate the feedback. And I have a pretty thick skin and I, I'd rather have, I'd rather. I'm, I have a pretty thick skin and I, I'd rather have, I'd rather hear feedback, you know, if people have things.
I think you've done a good job in taking constructive input. I like how today, we tried the timing of the items. That's new. I think we're making good progress with the leadership as is. I also think Tricia has a good relationship with the Select Board, which is important. So I'm very comfortable with the way things are. I think that in a year or two, when we have more progress on the comprehensive plan, we might have a different kind of conversation as a, as a Board. But I for one think this is the right call.
All right, then we have a motion on the floor. Oh, are you running it? I kind of, I guess you're still running it.
We have a motion on the floor.
I'd like to say one more thing. Anna, having the difference of opinion is a good thing. It makes us stronger. So I don't think it's wrong if you have a different view than one other person. I think it's really, it's, I think all five of us or six of us bring such different perspectives to maybe the same project and it only makes us stronger as a team. So I think you don't have to feel bad about it. I think you're doing fantastic. You make us feel better when we think of it, so.
And actually, I have one more comment too, because I think the motion was just to keep everything in place. It's like a group, right? So my question on that is as we, it's not really a question, maybe it's a statement, as we go forward with the comprehensive plan, because this has come up a little bit in the last couple of months, that we'll have to find a balance between the two of us about, actually, it's between the two of us and between you and Kate, about what falls into comprehensive plan and what falls into the day-to-day workings of the Planning Board so that I can have discussions with you without being a quorum and you can have discussions with Kate without being a quorum. And sometimes that line is going to get gray, you know? But if we can try to clarify as much as we can.
I think we also, Kate and I can make an effort in our reporting to start to get more substantive on what is the role, for example. Like, in some ways, I thought it'd be helpful for us, for Kate and I, to do a presentation on what we've researched as far as like Planning Board role in a comprehensive plan. And we can work with Peter on a presentation like that so that it can be aired out to the whole Board so that we can better understand for the two, for the next two years, how does the whole Board, how does the Chair, what is our approach as a Planning Board to this process? Because Kate and I don't really know yet how active this Board wishes to be in that process. We have certain ideas. Some of them are the same, some of them are not. Like Kate, Kate and I are not always on the same side either. So we need to figure out, the two of us, Kate and I, how to present that information to the whole Board and really understand where the Board is. Like, how involved do you want to be? How, right, because my idea of how involved the Planning Board should be may not be realistic to everyone's schedule, et cetera. So I think that will help so that we as a Board can get on the same page so that we can understand, okay, this is not going to work for us this well. Maybe it's not going to work for us this year, but next year, we as a Board want to be more involved on the... Because as you recall, the first year of the comprehensive plan is more data-oriented, data gathering. The second year is the writing piece. So the Board has to start thinking about, at what point do you want to be part of that? Peter is obviously here and he's on this, on the comprehensive plan project management team and he's going to work very closely with Michael and the consultant as well. So Peter has some input for us as well, I'm sure. So I think we need to figure that out altogether with Peter involved as well.
I'm sure, I'm sure it'll be a learning process as this thing really starts rolling, so, okay.
So I guess I'll make a motion formally to appoint Tricia Kendall to be Chair of the Planning Board, myself as Vice Chair, Kate as Clerk.
Do I hear a second? In a roll call vote?
Anna Tassmanitsky, aye.
Marcelo Hona, aye.
Catherine Jersey, aye.
And Tricia Kendall, aye. Time, 10:12. Since we've covered all of, since we covered everything and everyone's packing up, I will make a motion to adjourn at 10:12.
I'll second that.
Roll call vote.
Anna Tassmanitsky, aye.
Marcelo Hona, aye.
Catherine Jersey, aye.
And Tricia Kendall, aye. Thanks, everybody.
People, I appreciate what you're saying very much. I think it's great.